That's not Luke.
That's the murals guy.
Oh, okay.
Matt, you brought your assistant?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the town council to meeting the order Monday, October 21st, and I'll ask Deputy Mayor Forrest to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And now I'll ask Sue to call the roll, please.
Mayor Lesser?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Here.
Councillor Bailey? Councillor Carbone?
Here.
Councillor Clancy?
Here.
Councillor Durek?
Here.
Councillor Rhodes?
Here.
Councillor Timbrow?
Here.
Councillor Zambrillo?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Before we start tonight, I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence for Frank Kelly, but let me tell you a little bit about him for those of you that don't know. So Kelstrom has been a Weathersfield business since 1942, 82 years manufacturing business. Frank was the president of Kelstrom until his passing on October 12th, a little while ago. And the company has done a lot for Weathersfield, and Frank has done a lot for Weathersfield. Matter of fact, one of the things they do, they had a paid internship program with Weathersfield High School students about three decades ago. And a lot of those students from Weathersfield High School went on and still work for Kelstrom. And Frank did a lot for our town. And I ask all for a moment of silence for Frank. Thank you. Moving right along, tonight, we have the opportunity, we're starting with a presentation. It says on your agenda, those of you that have it, "Community Art Strategy", and that's a fancy way to say potential murals program. We are looking into potentially enhancing our community with public art. And we're fortunate to have the founder and leader of Rise Up Connecticut, Connecticut Murals, Matt Conway, who invited me recently on a tour of the murals in Hartford. It was fascinating. And many communities around greater Hartford and around the state have had public art through Matt's organization. And Matt, I'm calling you. I think we have the presentation ready to go. And Matt, what I'd like you to do is you come up there and just give your name and address for the record. You can bring your assistant if you want. She's welcome to... Yeah, okay. And Chief of Staff?
Yeah.
And your presentation is loading up. But for the record, just name and address, and then you can go ahead.
So Matt Conway addresses 201 Newgate Road, East Granby, Connecticut.
And the floor is yours, Matt.
All right. I'm just waiting for the pop-up. So yeah, thank you, everybody. My name's Matt Conway. I'm founder and executive director of the Rise Up Group. The Rise Up Group was founded in 2012 as a youth development and mentoring program. And so think of Big Brother, Big Sister, Boys and Girls Club type of activities with youth. And the kids in that program wanted to do public art and wanted to create a mural for their city. And at that time, when they approached me to make this project happen, there was no organization like Rise Up that existed in Hartford or in the state. So we figured out how to make this mural happen for these kids back in 2016. And since then, we have launched Rise Up for Arts, which is one of our largest programs under our nonprofit. And we've completed over 300 mural and placemaking projects across the state from Stanford all the way up to Putnam, Connecticut, in a community-inclusive way. So using thousands of volunteers, working with thousands of youth a year to create this public art. And it just really creates a gorgeous sense of pride. Some of the other programs we offer, Able Table is a new product we just launched, which is a handicap-accessible picking table, built by adults with disabilities as well. And the handicap-accessible part is in the middle of the table, which makes it so everybody has a seat at the table instead of renegating folks to the end. We also have a service leadership program, which if you think of a kind of Eagle Scout project, we work with youth throughout Connecticut to develop solutions for their community. And we also run a workforce development program and a general contracting company called Rise Up Home and Commercial Services. So really taking homeless folks and second-chance citizens and giving them productive, passionate, purposeful work, revitalizing folks' homes and businesses. So I'm here to talk about Rise Up for Arts and our work in hopefully bringing more public art, placemaking, and vitality to the Weathersfield community. And so why work, you know, with Rise Up and a public art organization to make public art happen? You know, I'll be honest, many towns and anyone in this room can make a mural happen. You know, there's no, you know, proprietary, you know, path to what we do. But we provide expertise to municipalities and individuals to make sure it's done right. There's so many murals we've seen go up within a year or two. You know, they're peeling, they're not well-maintained, there's no sustainable strategy in place. So we're really here to make sure that there's sustainability in public art, that there's, you know, maintenance within it. We work with municipalities to bring world-class artists right from Connecticut into the cities. So instead of hiring artists outside of Connecticut, which many cities and states do to create public art, we've hired 100% Connecticut-based artists. One of our top artists, Corey Payne, was born and raised here in Weathersfield as well, which is pretty cool. We provide end-to-end project management, really taking the burden off municipalities to figure out how to make this happen. And a big thing is, you know, we develop a curriculum and process that makes sure that the community is included and we support in fundraising strategy. So we know a lot of these public art projects. Folks in the community don't want taxpayer dollars to fund all of them, so we work with municipalities to help identify private funding, grant opportunities, and support in fundraising efforts. Couple do's and don'ts of why work with an organization like Rise Up versus a municipality doing it themselves. And it's, you know, like some of the things I've said, we bring that professional network of artists, we bring the process, we bring the right way of doing it so it lasts, you know, 10, 20, 30 years, instead of needing to redo that investment after a couple of years. Like I said, we provide end-to-end project management, fundraising support, government relations. You know, the city of Stamford has hired us to do a very large-scale, you know, close to 3,000-square-foot mural project and manage the entire RFP process for them. That includes getting that out to artists in the community and also project managing the execution of it. And here's just some of the impact we've had across the state. Over $2 million invested in public art. We've done over 300 projects. We have a network of over 100 professional muralists here in the state. We've worked with over 40 towns and communities, and we've worked with over 100 volunteers. So it's folks in the community that really helped this public art happen. And by including the community, it gives folks a sense of pride in what we're creating for the town. Just some of our other programs. We offer an emerging artist program. So if there's artists here in Weathersfield that have never done a mural before, we make sure that we're building infrastructure up to support artists, already in a community to teach them and train them on how to do large-scale murals. We have an art club, we have studios, and we also have a creative leadership program, which is an in-school and after-school program for youth. And here's just a couple of our example projects from across the state. Some of these you may be familiar with. The 18-story mural right in, you know, downtown Hartford, that was one of our big projects we did last year. So here, here's a Corey Payne mural, Weathersfield resident or Weathersfield person. Another Corey Payne. So when we painted this, this was the tallest mural in Connecticut at the time. We since almost doubled it with that 18-story one. So yeah, we're, you know, here to, like I said, support the vitality of communities and, you know, make public art happen in a community-inclusive and accessible way.
Matt, thank you for that presentation and all the work you've done across Connecticut to bring public art to enhanced communities. I'll quickly ask if any councillors have any questions before we move on to the next agenda item. Councillors? Anybody? If not, before I say thank you again, I will say that we are going to form a committee to review this. I've asked Councillor Carbone and Councillor Clancy to represent the council and bipartisan and nonpartisan way. And we're gonna get a few community members as well. We're gonna look for some community volunteers to serve on that committee and see if we can work with Matt and your organization to hopefully have some public art in Weathersfield. So Matt, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's great. Thanks, Matt. Proclamation next, or... Okay. So the next item on our agenda is our revaluation presentation discussion. Assessor Walter? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Walter Topliff. I'm the assessor here in the town of Weathersfield. And we're gonna talk about 2024 townwide revaluation. And I have with me here tonight, I have John Valenti, the Northeast Regional Director for Tyler Technologies, and the project manager for the revaluation, Saleem Sardah.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, everyone. It's an honor to be here tonight to speak with you about reassessment. I'm gonna ask you to think about one major question that we deal with in reassessment, and it affects your lives, which is what is the value of my house or my commercial business? What is the current market value? What would I sell my house for? That's all we do and we focus in on. And that's what reassessment is all about. Now reassessment hasn't occurred here in Weathersfield for six years. That's how long it's been since the last time a reassessment is done. So I'm gonna walk you through the process. These are the folks that worked on the project here, and many of these people have many years of experience. I've been doing this for 44 years, so I'm pretty old and I've been around for a while. Saleem has been doing this for over 30 years. Drew, who works for us to do the commercial appraisal work and residential appraisal work, has been doing this for over 20. And Steve Bessio, I think, has close to 50 years' worth of experience. And David has been around for about 40 years as well, doing data collection and appraising work. So you have a really robust staff that did the job. Someone, folks who've been around for a while, who know what they're doing and who work primarily in Connecticut. So the agenda for tonight is to talk about what is a reassessment? What is the reassessment process? And in the future, you're gonna be receiving something known as a change notice, which would be an indication to you as to what your assessment was based upon the values back in six years ago, 2018, and then currently, what's the market value as of October 1st of 2024. And I'll also explain something called the hearing process, where you have a chance to come in and go over your assessment, have it explained to you, answer questions, and for you to share with us what you think the assessment of the property ought to be or the market value of the property. The data value in Connecticut has been established as October 1st, 2024. So all of the values that we establish here in Weathersfield are as of that specific date. So something that happens, a sale that occurs in December of this year, is not meaningful to arriving at the value for October 1st. We look at sales for a year period of time from October 1st of 2023 to October 1st of 2024. That's the key data value, and that's the period of time we're looking at. The three goals of a reassessment are equity, accuracy, and fairness. In terms of equity, we're talking about comparing people's homes one against the other. You have raised ranches on the street, they're all similar to each other. Are they being treated in the exact same way? Are they equitable? The question of accuracy is the data collected about the property accurate? The right number of bedrooms, bathrooms, fireplaces, the size acreage? We look for accuracy. And the last is fairness, to make sure that people are paying their fair share of taxes based upon a fair and equitable assessment. So why do we need reassessments? Values have inconsistently changed here in Weathersfield over the past six years. This happens in all communities in Connecticut. Some neighborhoods go up faster than others, some neighborhoods decline, some styles of houses go in and out of vogue. Years ago, raised ranches were a big deal, 20 or 30 years ago. There's not a great desirability now for raised ranches, perhaps. It depends on the location, certainly, but styles of houses go in and out of desirability. There are things called unequal assessments, where properties next to each other are not appraised the same way as properties that are down the street that are very similar. And the intention is to make them equal or fair next to each other. There's also a state law, and that's why it happens. It's called Law 12-62 or Statute 12-62, and it mandates fair and equitable assessments must be obtained in each community in the state of Connecticut. Another purpose of a reassessment is to collect and correct and collect missing data on properties. Now, many of you may have some fears about reassessment. Most of us do. Even if you've been around a reassessment for a while and had it done before, you may still have some fears. And one of the fears that some people have is that we're gonna discover hidden things about your property that you didn't take a permit out for. And that sometimes does happen, because people don't take out permits. But people get kind of afraid of that. The other fear that people generally jump to is that they feel like they're gonna be paying more taxes right away because they know the value of their property has risen over the past six years. So they jump to the idea they're gonna have to pay more taxes. The other issue that people get afraid of is that governments are gonna decide to spend more because the grand list is now increased and government has a chance to set its budget, perhaps at a higher level than it did in the past. The other concern that people have is a shift in the tax base. So some area of town goes up faster than the other, or commercial properties go down in relation to residential properties. There's a shifting that goes on. I wanna talk to you about dispelling some of these fears. The first one is that when you pay taxes, you pay them based upon equitably established values. And that's the whole purpose of a reassessment as of October 1st. So the taxes are based upon that. Collecting hidden improvements provides a foundation for fairness. So it's only fair that someone who has improved their home has an increase in value versus somebody who hasn't worked on their home or renovated it. Any shift that may occur in assessment by class promotes a greater fairness. And there really is no cause-all evidence that show that governments in Connecticut have raised their budgets just because of a reassessment occurring. The last key point I wanna make to you, which is significant, is reassessments are designed to be revenue-neutral. It's not a circumstance. Reassessments are not designed to raise taxes. So if the grand list goes up, which is the summation of all the market values of all the properties in Weathersfield, if it goes up 50%, what happens typically is the tax rate goes down by that same proportion of 50%. But then you have budget increases that are part of that. But it's designed to be revenue-neutral. It's not designed to raise taxes, and I want you to be aware of that. The percentages that property values go up will be published by the assessor on the website. So you'll be able to see what the average increase is, you'll be able to see all your neighbors' assessments, if you want to see those. And you'll also be able to see all the sales that we used as evidence to arrive at the values for your properties. Because all the property values are based upon sales of properties that have occurred here in Weathersfield over the past year. The goals of the reassessment are to implement new assessments to reflect 70% fair market value as of October 1st, 2024, using best professional practices. People for years have asked me, "Why isn't 70%?" Connecticut is one of the few states that doesn't value property based upon 100% of market value. So if a property is worth $100,000, your assessment is 70% of that. So it's $70,000. And no one really quite knows why that was done. It was done historically years ago. Some people say it was done to be devious and shifty and hide things from people. I don't know. It's the way we practice, so we all think of 70%. But all the other states I work in, they're all at 100%. Connecticut is unique. We'd like to meet or exceed the Office of Policy and Management Standards. There is an OPM here in Connecticut which governs our work. So our work is done, but it's also judged specifically, not just by the assessor who oversees our work, but also by the Office of Policy and Management. We also wanna meet or exceed the Uniform Standards of Professional Practice, or USPAP, which we're members of. And we also wanna exceed or meet the Standards on Mass Appraisal published by the International Association of Assessing Officers, which Walter and I and Saleem are members of. And finally, we wanna target and optimize reappraisal methods and resources to focus on appraisal needs while addressing the uniqueness of the town of Weathersfield. Because it's that uniqueness that has created the value of your properties. People move to Weathersfield for a specific reason. They like the area, they like the location, they like the neighborhoods. And that's what we're trying to reflect when we come up with market value. The data value, again to remind you, is October 1st, 2024. The market value that we establish must be between 90% and 100% of the median of all valid sales as of the data value. So we get together a whole cluster of sales per year. We compare it to your property to arrive at a market value. But it must be between 90% and 100% as of the data value. And once again, in Connecticut, since it's 70% of value, the values have to be between 63% and 70% as the data value. Weathersfield, with Walter, who's the assessor, is working very closely with us. He looks over our work, he advises us, he knows the community better than anyone else. And he's been a great help to us. Then there's Tyler, us, who've been around for a while and have done reassessments on a professional basis. And there's the Office of Policy and Management, who also works with us and governs our work. And that really is what makes a successful reassessment, is that teamwork of all of those folks working together. There are three phases of a reassessment. The data collection phase, the data mailers, which you were all sent in the mail and asked to be filled out, which you would write down whether you do have three bedrooms, if you have air conditioning, whether you have a fireplace or not. You all were sent that and responded back to those. That was done between March of this year and September. We started doing data analysis sometime in July and completed it in October. And the last section, which we're gonna be talking about tonight, is valuation review and informal meetings from November to December of '24. The definition of market value is really critical for all of us to understand. Sometimes people say, "Well, gee, they overpaid for the property, or they got a good deal on it, or there was financing associated with it, or they had to buy the house because they had to relocate." So the government, and USPAP in particular, the Uniform Standards of Professional Practice, has come up with a definition to help us, guide us in that realm. And it really is the most probable price. It doesn't say the highest price or the lowest price. It's the most probable price. In a competitive and open market where people are bidding, under all conditions requisite to a fair sale, with a buyer and seller each acting prudently and knowledgeably, they have to know what they're doing, have to be aware of when they're buying the property and why they're paying so much for it. And they're not affected by undue stimulus. So being forced to buy a house in a day is undue stimulus. You had to buy a house quickly because you got a new job and you just had to move in. That's kind of undue stimulus. Implicit in the definition, you have to do it as a specified data value. The buyer and seller are typically motivated. They're well-informed and well-advised. It has to be exposed on the open market for a reasonable period of time. Payment has to be made in terms of cash. And it has to be unaffected by special or creative financing or sales concessions. So when you think about your market value, think of that definition. These are the phases or steps in the reassessment process. The data collections phase, the data mailer phase, building permit information. Analysis portion follows next. Modeling, which is statistical, which comes up with values for your properties based upon the sales that have occurred. Valuation review, where we look at the properties in the field to see if it makes sense. We look at properties next to each other. Is that colonial worth $450,000? Next to the other colonial worth $550,000? Is it bigger? Is it smaller? Does it have different amenities? We do that on valuation review. And finally, is the hearing phase, which we're gonna talk more in depth about tonight. These are the data mailers that were sent out to you folks. There's a picture on them. It shows the bedrooms, bathrooms, square footage, and so on. And you had a chance to fill it out and ask us information about your property. We went to ask you information, rather, about your property if there was a question or a deviance from the town records. I wanted to share with you some evidence about how values have changed here in town. And I wanted to show you a series of properties that sold four to six years ago and to show you what they're worth today. So this is a property in Weathersfield that sold on June 10th of 2024 for $475,000. In September in 2018, it sold for $268,000. It's gone up 1.77 times. That's a 77% increase in a period of six years. Here's another one. This is a condo. Sold in 2019 for $62,000, and in 2023, it sold for $125,000. That's a two-time increase or 102% increase in market value. Here's a home that sold in 2018 for $215,000. In '24, it sold for $315,000. That's a 1.47 time increase or 47% increase in market value. Here's a home in 2019 that sold for $267,000, and in 2024, sold for $450,000 or 1.69 times, or a 69% increase in value. Here's another one. 2019, $360,000. 2023, $545,000. A 51% increase in value. Here's one in 2019. $206,000 in 2019. 223, 2023, sold for $315,000 or 1.53 times. A 53% increase in value. It did have a new roof and new siding before it sold. This one in 2019 sold for $225,000. 2024, resold for $355,000 or 1.58 times, or 58% increase. It did have an updated kitchen and new siding. Here's another one that sold in 2020, right around the pandemic, for $315,000. And then it sold in 2024 for $450,000, for 1.43 times or 43% increase. And they updated the kitchen here. I wanted to share with you, Walter and I were talking along with Saleem about increases of neighborhoods. This gives you a perspective. If you just saw all those sales, you can see the increases are 50% or more, in some cases 40%, some higher. There was one there at 100% with a condominium. But these are the value changes by averages within the neighborhoods of town. So the northern section there is 43%. The center of the community, about 54%. The eastern side, 57 and 54. The southern section, 49, 50, 44 in the southern section. On the western side, 49, 51, 58, and then 49 again. So they're fairly similar, the clusterings, but they are slightly different, which shows the demand has changed in different locations over the period of time since the last reassessment six years ago. I'm gonna talk to you briefly about commercial valuation, because it is another portion of what we do. And it's based upon something called the income capitalization approach, which involves the estimation of value based upon a property's income. And what it does is it looks at the present worth of that income if you capitalize it. And capitalization is based upon converting an income to a value. That's the way people buy properties that are commercial properties and are income-producing. There's a form that's filled out in the state of Connecticut called the Income and Expense Form. It's required of all commercial property owners in the state of Connecticut to fill it out. And if you do not return it in the state of Connecticut, you have a 10% penalty on your taxes. It's the only state, the United States, that has such a penalty. It's really profound, and it's an excellent solution to come up with fair and equitable values. So you should be proud of yourself here in the state of Connecticut. And other states are looking to change their laws based upon Connecticut's leadership in that regard. I wanted to share with you the increases in market rents here in Weathersfield. We show how houses were going up close to 50% or more, but the commercial rents have only increased about 15% here in Weathersfield. The apartment rents, on the other hand, have gone up about 33%. Probably not a sup- The apartment rents, on the other hand, have gone up about 33%, probably not a surprise to you, as you know, market demand for apartments is quite high. So commercial valuation, very simply, if you look at the net income of a building, let's say it netted $100,000, and I'm talking about rents, I'm not talking about business sales, $100,000 worth of net income, and you use a capitalization rate, which is a rate of return, you divide it by a 10% capitalization rate, you arrive at a market value of about $1 million. We're going to go back to, again, reminding you of the October 1st date of 2024. Statistics must be between 90% and 100% of the median of all values, and between 63 and 70 for assessments. These are the statistics that we gathered here and finalized in Weathersfield as we're concluding the project. So we're currently at 95% of value. These standards here, which says median ASR is assessment sales ratio, these are the standards provided to us by the International Association of Assessing Officers. The standards must be between 90% and 110% of value for ASR, 15% or less for COD, which is coefficient of dispersion, .98 to 103 for the PRD, which is price-related differential, and negative .05 to positive .05 for the PRB, which is the price-related bias. Coefficient of dispersion is the variation around the median, to see how far it is from the median. The closer you are, the tighter the sales are, and the closer the assessments are. PRD, or price-related differential, helps us to decide whether we're over-assessing or under-assessing high-priced or lower-priced homes. So in the case of Weathersfield, we passed on the median ASR, or the assessment sales ratio, at 95%, the COD at 6.2, the PRD at .99, and the PRB at .004. So we're certainly meeting standards. This is what the change notice is going to look like when you get it. So before you get this, it's going to say the town of Weathersfield, the top left-hand corner, and your return address, it's going to be a window envelope, it's going to have your name on it. Before you open the envelope, I suggest you do a few things. One is to sit down and have a good meal and relax yourself, perhaps have a drink before you own it, open it. But I'm going to also ask you another favor, which is to go back to the question I asked you earlier, is what is the value of my property? I know all of you know, and you all have an understanding about what you think your property is worth. Some people say they don't know, but we all, I think, have a sense of what we think our property is worth or how much we would sell it for. My dad, who, before he died in 2001, said to me, there are two values. There's what I will sell it for, and there's the value that the assessor should assess it for. Two different things, and they should be quite a bit difference, distance between the two of them, and I would have to argue with him about that. But in Connecticut, and here in Weathersfield, we're at 100% of market value. It's not what you think it should be worth for tax purposes, it's what we all honestly believe our property is worth. So before you open the envelope, remember that number in your head, 500,000, 300,000, 200,000, 900,000. You folks know the many sales perhaps that are going on in your neighborhood. You probably have friends who've sold their properties. So think of that before you open the envelope after your good meal and drink, and then maybe you'll be relaxed and you'll say, jeez, I didn't think it was worth this much, but you know it's right, it's the right number. Or jeez, it's really too low, it should be higher. So if you think it's too low, you ought to come down and speak to Walter, and he'll be glad to raise it for you, if you'd like. So what do I want to do if I want to appeal my assessment? You can go online and review all the property data. You'll see the property record cards up there with pictures, and you're going to see the calculations, and you're going to see sales evidence, so you can take a look at what's online for your own home and your neighbors. Judge the value of the property, really think in your heart, is that the right value? Then you can request a phone hearing if you think the value is inaccurate, if you think, jeez, you know, this, I can't get 500,000 for this house. My neighbor's house sold for 400,000, they could barely get that, and my house is inferior to that. So look at that data and then set up an appointment with us. You can make a call, or you can make an appointment online by setting up a scheduling system that we'll have set up for you. The hearings will be done by phone, which is convenient for you, you don't have to drive anywhere, you do it over the phone. You can also email documents to us before the hearings. So if you folks have appraisals that were done recently by a bank, if you had a refinance appraisal, submit that to us. Or if you have some sort of estimate that was done recently that might help us in determining the value of the property. If you have any other documents, you want to share with us some sales in the street and write a document to us and say, based on these sales, I think the property should be worth this. The notices are planned to be mailed around November 15th, right before Thanksgiving. So you all can discuss this around the Thanksgiving table, this will be a great conversation. You can then share, what do you think my house is worth, and you can look at the numbers. The deadline to schedule for a hearing is November 29th, right after Thanksgiving, you'll have it, by between the time you receive it and the time of November 29th is your time to schedule a hearing. Hearings will start around December 11th, right before Christmas. However, we will not tell you until after Christmas what we responded with, so you won't receive any Christmas presents from us. It'll occur in the time of January. And the reason why it takes some time is that Walter and I and Saleem have to look over everything, all the hearing results that come in, and to treat everything fair and equitably. Maybe we have to change our neighborhood or raise someone's assessment, sometimes that happens, and we find an error, somebody points that out to us. You must apply, if you talk to us and you get a reduction and you're happy with it, then you can celebrate. If you talk to us and you don't get a reduction, or it's not as much as you had hoped, and you have evidence to support a further claim of reduction, you can go to the next step. And the next step is the Board of Assessment Appeals, and you must file by February 20th, and you have a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals here in the audience. I won't tell him to raise his hand, you'll go over and see him, right? All right. So the hearings are a one-on-one phone meeting. You should be able to just supply things like appraisals to them, any purchase and sale agreements that you might have, closing statements, and if you have a commercial property, recent income and expense data, tax returns or leases. And post-hearing submissions, so after you meet with us, you can submit other information to us later on, and we'll review that as well if you don't have the data before that. This picture on the right was taken of me a long time ago without a beard, and when my hair was not gray. So the process is a summation of these things, quality data collection regarding the data mailers, building permits, and improvements on your home, detailed analysis and modeling, accurate valuation review, and then hearings, and the whole goal at the end is fairness, equity, and transparency to all of you. So the last thought I had for you is if you have questions for me, this would be a good time to ask, either of the council, or you folks want to ask questions, I'm here, I can stay as long as you want.
So thank you, John, for that very thorough presentation. Appreciate the graphics, I like the humor and the advice on what to do before we open our mail, dinner and a drink, thank you. So I'm going to open it up to the council to see if the council has any questions for John. Councilor Zambro.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. You brought a lot of clarity to a topic that can be very complex and intimidating, so I appreciate that. I was wondering if you are seeing any trends or you expect to see any trends related to the range of house prices versus how much they seem to be increasing percentage-wise? For example, if a, say, $250,000 house that sold in 2018 is increasing at this amount percentage-wise typically versus a $500,000 house in 2018?
There seems to be a tendency, the lower-priced homes are increasing faster, if that's what you're asking.
That is what I'm asking, yes, thank you.
Yeah, and a lot of that has to do with the mortgage market changing, because rates are higher, less people can buy houses over 500,000 or 700,000, and that's the reason for that, yeah.
Okay.
Good point, good question.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Zambro. Councilor Timbrow, no, no? Any further, Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Thank you. I appreciated the humor as well, by the way, the appraising humor, which is dry and cool. That said, I was interested in, you talked about the business land and business building evaluation, or valuation of the value of that land and those buildings, as based on their ability to income produce, and then a multiple, I think it was then a multiple after that. Did I generally get that process correct?
It's not a multiple, it's a division, actually, so it's, yeah, you can consider it a multiplier, there's ways of doing it by a gross rent multiplier, but what we're talking about is net income divided by a capitalization rate of return to arrive at a value. And that technique is used all over the United States when people buy commercial properties. They try to find out what the rents are, the total gross rent, they take off the vacancy because they're losing people, there are tenants here and there, credit loss, and then there are expenses to keep that property going for maintenance and for management and so on. And what's left is the net income, and that's just divided by a capitalization rate to arrive at a value.
So would, you know, we have a property in town that we affectionately call the Weight Watchers Building, which has not derived any rent or appreciable revenue in its economic sense. So how would we appraise a piece of commercial land that doesn't derive any economic revenue?
Well, is this, I guess there's a number of questions that come to mind right away. The first is that I would ask, so this is a building that has no tenants in it, and hasn't had tenants for a long time.
Correct.
Okay. Much like you have a shopping center right down here at the end of Silas Dean, which has a grocery store next to Popeyes, and to the, on the right-hand side of that grocery store, there's a huge vacant space that's been vacant for a long time. Is that an example of what you're thinking about?
I was thinking more of a complete concept, where that, imagine that whole area was completely vacant for a long time, but yet held certainly a commercial value?
Yeah, so if that happens, you have to ask yourself the question, why is that happening? Why is this not renting? Is there something wrong with the building functionally that's not renting? Is there a management problem with the property where they're asking too much money for rent and they just simply are not willing to rent for a lesser amount? And if that's the problem, then what we do is we kind of estimate what we think the rent ought to be. So instead of it being, they're asking $25 a foot, maybe it should be $18 a foot, and so we come up with the economic rent at that point. If there is a systemic vacancy problem for another reason that is unknown to us, we would value it by something called the cost approach, which is a whole, another technique as opposed to the income approach, which is based upon the reproductive replacement cost value of the building, less depreciation, plus the value of the land. And that's also called a value substitution. So if you can't value the property based upon its income, maybe you want to rebuild a building, and that's the basis of that theory or thought.
So would you look at, do you then have a secondary list of all those properties that, let's say, have extremely high vacancy rates, like that building is 50% vacant, or 90%, or 100% vacant? And now you go through and you actually do a different appraisal approach for those properties, is that, is that how you're doing the complete?
Yeah, we really spend a lot of time, because Connecticut has all this great income and expense data, we spend a lot of time looking at actual income, because we believe that's typically the most you can obtain for that property. And those expenses, if they're reporting them fairly and not lying about them, they're fairly accurate, and we have a lot of that data. So we focus in on that, and yes, I can tell you which properties have vacancy problems, we have all that cited for us if they fill the form out correctly. And so we'll certainly reflect that.
And then do you change that assessment? Because, you know, their revenue is not true to the value of the property?
Do I change it because it's got a vacancy problem?
Not because it's a problem, but because the assessment technique that you initially said is not necessarily applicable to that particular, that particular set of properties.
We would try to reflect that, yes.
Yep. And related to the valuation of commercial properties again, now there's, the income of, the way in which you use the income to determine the value of the property, I'm imagining, and this is one end of the spectrum, that is the property itself worth the amount that the building necessarily is on it? So you might have an area, let's say Weathersfield's becoming very popular, and people are buying properties, or companies are buying properties to then rebuild, right, to maybe demolish and rebuild. So it's not, they're not purchasing, nor is the land and the value of the property worth necessarily what is the income, the revenue of the property, because they want the property to then create a whole new revenue base.
Right, well, we don't know what those are, we don't know what, we're not doing feasibilities of which properties are at that potential, need to be torn down and recreated.
Of course not.
We're only appraising them for what they are as of October 1st, what condition they were in at that point.
Are you appraising them for that or the value of the property itself? Because I think you're appraising the value of the property, the land and its appearances.
Yes.
So if you're doing the value of the land, the appearances, like, let's say you had someone that was a piece of land next to it that recently sold for a high number.
Yes.
Because that location, 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 was a hot, was, for whatever reason, very popular and had increased value. Now that person may be still deriving that same, that person, that property, property A may still be deriving its regular revenue that it always has, and it has a lower assessment, while property B recognized that this area of the town, just like you did neighborhoods of town, which have different, you know, hotspots, where the value is going up because of the actual purchase and sale next to it, so.
So what, so what you're bringing up is that a property may be worth more and it's sold for more. So we would look at the sales of the properties in the area as well, not just the income of that property. So we blend the sales approach, which is to look at sales, along with the income capitalization approach, along with the cost approach to arrive at a value.
So those are, for all of our properties, we're blending now those three approaches and not just using approach one?
We would do three approaches, we do three approaches to value for income-producing properties, for all commercial properties. For residential properties, we do the cost approach, and we do a sales comparison approach. The tests are based upon sales.
Yeah, but I was talking about commercial, obviously.
I understand, so I'm telling you, we do three approaches.
And then which approach?
Consider those examples you're giving us.
Which approach do you use when evaluating the commercial property, then? Is it a blend? Is it, we choose one?
It depends on the property, it depends on the circumstances. You're giving me some hypotheticals, and I don't know the specifics, if you, we don't know, you know, I'd be glad to talk to you, if you have a commercial property, we can talk about.
I don't, by the way.
What's that, you do?
I don't.
You don't, okay.
No.
If you did have one, I'd be glad to talk with you and go over the specifics and compare this to that and these various hypotheticals you're talking about.
Sure, okay.
But we do use three approaches.
Can we go to the neighborhood slide?
Sure.
Thanks. Kind of liked looking at his dog wagging the tail.
Yeah, yeah, that's a nice slide, I use that one a lot.
Not going after the burger, though.
Yeah. The word I use with that, when I do teach classes at different times about appraisal, and instead of the word questions up there, I put the word anticipation. One of the premises of real estate appraisal is anticipation, and the income approach in particular is about anticipating future benefits.
There you go.
I'm curious, some of these neighborhoods that you've designed here, or that have been designed, how did you design these particular neighborhoods?
They're based upon styles of homes, price ranges, zoning, clustering them together, you can see various clusters. There's a total of 12 neighborhoods that we've established here in Weathersfield. The neighborhood, excuse me, the neighborhood method has been around for quite some time, and we looked at existing neighborhood structures and may have drawn or redrawn lines.
So is this based on a statistical basis by which you determine these, or it certainly doesn't look geographic?
It's statistical and physical, so we drive the area to see if a neighborhood delineation is there or not. You've got roads that bisect, that move neighborhoods into places, you've got geographic areas, you've got clustering going on, you've got zoning issues, all of those things are blended together, but we drive them to discern them, and we look at them statistically as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Further, Council Clancy.
I was interested in what you said, what you had said about the uniqueness of Weathersfield.
Yeah.
So are prices inflated because of the lack of inventory and the fact that people want to come here?
I wouldn't use the word inflated.
Okay, what would you say?
Prices are increasing because of the desirability of Weathersfield. But that's true throughout Connecticut, this is not an unusual thing just at Weathersfield. But you do have some unique qualities here. You have the older section of town, the canal area, weren't you folks called the Onion Town? Is that the term for it, which is really, there's some history here, a strength of history, and people are drawn to that, I think, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council Clancy. Further, council comment, questions? To you, Nun, thank you again, John. We don't typically open the presentation period up to the public, but if anybody in the public during public comment wants to ask questions, we, through the town manager and the assessor's office, we can get back to you with answers to your questions, but we're not going to open it up to a back and forth. So, John, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation.
My pleasure.
Where are those neighborhoods are, just quick?
John, so we're not going to, Jim, we're not going to get back and forth, but quickly I'll entertain that, can you just kind of go where some of those neighborhoods that are illuminated there?
What would you like me to do?
Name the neighborhoods.
Name the neighborhoods. I don't have names for them.
So I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut that off, and I understand these are really important questions, and this affects all. are really important questions, and this affects all of us, but I'm gonna ask you to contact the assessor's office.
Yeah.
Or through the town manager for more specifics.
Yeah, those are detailed. It's a color-coded map, so it goes along with colors and percentages. We can certainly get you more details if you'd like.
Is that on our website?
No, I didn't see this.
No, so the question from the deputy mayor was, is this on the website? Can it be on the website with that detail, with the neighborhoods?
This is map.
Go ahead, Walter.
This whole presentation's gonna be on the website, and if we need more detail on, like, which streets are in which neighborhood, we can provide that also.
Okay. So again, this is our assessor, Walter, and we can get you more information. It's gonna go up on the website, and if there's more details you need through his office, we can get you more. So thank you, Walter. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a special proclamation I'm gonna read for tonight before we get into public comment. So this is a proclamation for National First Responders Day, and I'm just gonna read it. Whereas, we wish to recognize and applaud outstanding individuals within our community whose actions and accomplishments contribute to the health, safety, and well-being of Weathersfield and the surrounding region, and to the quality of life of its people. And whereas, first responders typically include all law enforcement officers, including our town police, state troopers, deputies, federal law enforcement base agents, agents, and school resource officers. It also includes paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, rescuers, military personnel, sanitation workers, public works. And whereas, first responders in many cases are volunteers and play an integral role in making a difference in appalling circumstances. And whereas, when others are running away from danger, first responders are there to make certain lives their safe, doing whatever it takes with an amazing capacity for courage and compassion. And whereas, our unending gratitude and respect are owed to these devoted individuals whose responsibility is the preservation of life, and one make the responsibility their own by serving as our first responders. So therefore, on behalf of the town council, I Ken Lesser, Mayor of Town of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim October 28th, just next Monday, October 28th, 2024, as National First Responders Day. Encourage all of our citizens to observe this day, to honor our first responders, and to pay tribute to those who have, excuse me, who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Finally, and witness whereof, I here do set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Weathersfield to be affixed today, October 21st, 2024. And that's a proclamation for National First Responders Day. Moving on in the agenda, we do not have any hearings tonight, so now we will go to public comment, and I'm gonna ask you, your name and address when you go up there. Most of you have been here before, but not all of you. We do have the timer, which is five minutes. When it hits four minutes, the yellow light will go on. When it hits five minutes, the red light will come on, and I will ask you to summarize your comments if you are at five minutes. I do ask you, when you come up, that you address the council and not the public. Your comments are to the council, and I please ask you all to be respectful when you make your comments. So at this time, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, and we're just gonna see by raise of hands. I'm gonna call you up as I see you. You'll all get a chance, and we have another public comment after, as most of you know. And I think, Daniel, I think I saw your hand first. So name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Daniel McNaughton. I'm a resident of Weathersfield at 42 Farmsstead Road. Thank you. I wanted to address one of the items that's on the agenda, which is the proposed changes to Millwoods Park. I think it's important to make sure our parks are in good working order for both families who live here, as well as residents who partake in recreational sports. I do have some concerns about some of the plans that are outlined on the agenda. Namely, my concern is centered around the use of artificial turf. Not many people are aware that artificial turf does contribute to runoff issues. It will increase microplastics in the waterways, and that is an important thing, because we have a, a very nearby waterway, which is the Gulf Creek, which I believe connects to the Connecticut River. There's a number of studies that have been shown over the years that, especially in professional arenas where artificial turf is used, there's a higher incidence of knee injuries. There's also a number of studies that have shown potential links to carcinogens related with artificial turfs. There's a lot of issues around using artificial turfs in hot weather. So during July and August, when we get some of these heat waves, the artificial turf does retain a lot more heat than natural turf. It is unable to correctly regulate temperature. Artificial turf retains a lot of the heat. Natural turf has a lot of water, which allows it to dry out, and similar to how humans sweat, it allows the turf to maintain a more comfortable and safe temperature for people on that turf. I know that a big benefit of artificial turf is proposed, is potentially lower maintenance costs. However, based off the design that was shown on there, there's gonna be a mix of artificial and natural turfs. I think that that would lead to an increase in overhead for our Parks and Rec Department. They'd have to maintain two different types of maintenance procedures for the different turfs. You'd have to still do the natural turf maintenance of seeding, watering, all the other requirements are there, as well as with artificial turf, there's a lot more chemical process that's needed to be done. You are pretty much vendor-locked with replacement or repairs versus natural turf. You can buy your seed from any contract that is approved by the town. There is a big concern within the community in Griswoldville, which is where I live, about the future proposal for a extension of the parking lot to dump onto Griswold. It does not appear to be a signaled intersection. There's a lot, I have a lot of concerns myself with the number of pedestrian traffic there and the street-level parking, that it would be a poorly designed intersection where individuals would have poor visibility trying to make a large number of left or right turns out of that park, especially when we have large events which draw sometimes out-of-town residents who are not familiar with our area. I've, I believe that the exit that currently exists from Millwood Park is a lit intersection that's probably the safest way. A lot of people are aware that Connecticut has a higher preponderance of pedestrian incidents with vehicles. I feel that this would be a step backwards for Weathersfield in that regard if we were to go forward with the exit onto Griswold. Or, yeah. That, I'm gonna go ahead and finish up. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Further public comment. Ma'am, I think you came up. Yep. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
She spoke before. I think she's okay.
My name is Donna Crowley, 64 Carson Avenue. I spoke back in February regarding the flag policy, and I'm going to ask again if you return to the old file policy. I noticed every one of the council members stood up and pledged allegiance to our American flag, excuse me, our American flag. That is the flag that represents all of us. We don't need other flags on our tower flagpole for the town. Please go back to the original of just the American flag, the state flag, the POW flag, and the town flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Further public comment, I'm gonna do it by the hands I see. Yes, ma'am, right? Yep. Just name and address for the record when you start.
Nancy Korea, 95 Griswold Road. To the town council, you have received three different letters from various environmental and health organizations warning you of the potential dangers that PFAS and artificial turf pose. However, there are more facts that need to be discussed. For example, synthetic turf fields are maintained with additional toxins, chemical disinfectants, flame retardants, and antimicrobials. They create micro-mesoplastic pollution drifting with wind currents, clogging nearby waters, entering our lungs, and exacerbating the global plastic crisis. They kill the ground biome underneath, underneath it so that it cannot support living creatures. This adds to the 40% and plummeting global insect collapse, which if it continues, will trigger catastrophic effects for all life on Earth. Artificial turf fields become excessively hot during warm weather and have to be rinsed off every 20 minutes. Recent studies reveal that temperatures can reach from 140 to 170 degrees Fahrenheit. This can trigger heat island effect whereby the neighborhoods surrounding it become even warmer on a hot day. Most turf and infill waste are not recycled. Used artificial turf is expected to produce 1 to 4 million tons of waste in the next 10 years, and it has nowhere to go. The used fields usually end up in empty lots, public spaces, backyards, and on private land, sometimes illegally dumped. According to the Philadelphia Inquirer, South Philly completed, completed a massive artificial turf complex because the turf manufacturer told city officials that the surface did not contain PFAS and provided a lab report to support its claim. Three independent experts who separately reviewed the test results, results told the Inquirer that the lab test compiled by Michigan-based RTI Laboratories, Inc. is flawed and inadequate, and that the turf likely contains the chemicals. Quote, "Purely misleading testing that no reputable lab would do." Unquote. Graham Peasley, a physicist and recognized expert on PFAS from the University of Notre Dame, wrote in an email to the newspaper, "The manufacturer is Spring Turf, the same company you are thinking of contracting to place the huge artificial turf field near homes and wetlands. The road replacing the pedestrian entrance to Millwoods is ill-conceived. Griswold Road is a residential neighborhood. It will cause more traffic congestion, and it's too close to the houses surrounding the pedestrian entrance. It will also give people an incentive to go to the park after dark. It is dangerous for pedestrians and for children playing in the field. Part of the beauty of Millwoods is that it is quiet and serene. Adding a pickleball court in conjunction with a tennis court, which is now denuded of trees, will increase noise pollution. Removing the magnificent shade trees near the tennis courts is unacceptable since they provide visual beauty as well as purifying the air. This issue has been ongoing for three years, but there has never been a conversation. Rather, it has been a concerted effort to cater to a vociferous minority. Children under 19 comprise 20%, 24% of residents, and not all play sports. During past renovations, residents received detailed renderings of what was planned via email. Not so this time. Many older residents don't use computers or phones as a way to learn about town news. Use this money to maintain existing fields, provide drainage where needed, and put more benches in shaded area in the park. Do not voice an ill-conceived master plan, riddled with logistical problems, nor try to coerce us into accepting drastic decisions that impact all residents, including the children who will play on these toxic fields."
Thank you, Nancy. Further public comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Rocky Karuk. I, one thing about the field is I support it, and I believe you should vote for it. I came to talk about the, the flag, because you're, you're gonna be voting on it again today. You tabled it last time, but now you're gonna vote on the, going back to the way it was with no other flags besides American flag, the POW flag, and, I guess, the town flag. And that's the way it was, and that's the way it should, it should have remained, and the citizens came out here supporting the, just leaving it the way it was. But apparently, the Democrats decided to go based on their own agenda and change it. And I, I kind of know why you changed it. You wanted to put up some flags that you wanted to put up, but you don't want to put up flags that don't meet your agenda, like the fallen officer, for the fallen officers, there's, there were two of them, really. There was Aaron Pelletier, and there was Barbie Garden from Weathersfield, was a Hartford cop, Hartford cop. Now, one of the Republicans proposed putting up the blue line flag to support this, these officers who had passed away. And I heard some ridiculous remarks, oh, they didn't give the 30 days' notice or whatever. How are they gonna give 30 days' notice when they, how are you gonna predict someone dying? And, 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 you know, when, when the Democrats took over, I was afraid something like this would happen, pushing their liberal agenda on, this progressive agenda, really. And, and what, what happened is, is the citizens came out and they were ignored. So I think, well, they're not representing us. They're representing their own party, you know, the Democratic Party. And I wrote some notes in case I forgot. Now, now you see the signs all around Connecticut. I have one of the signs up, and by, these signs were, were prepared by the relatives of Barbie Garden, the, the Weathersfield police officer who, from Hartford, who died. And those signs are signs of protest. They're still up there. For weeks, they've been up there. And they're, the protest is that you guys would refuse, you refuse to put up the blue light, blue striped flag. So we said, well, we're gonna put up signs in our yard to, to support fallen officers. Now, you, now this went national. It went, it gave you national news, and some of the crazies came out and started, you know, saying horrible things about you, but you brought that about, on yourself. And, and the reputation you gave us was that Weathersfield is anti-cop. And I've heard this from other towns. I went to the Berlin Fair one time, and the guy says, oh, yeah, Weathersfield, aren't you, I heard, I saw the story on, on the news about the cops, how you didn't want to support the cops who, who were, were passed away. I said, yeah, 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 that's us. And, and we didn't have a reputation like that before, but, but now we do. And it's great that you put up that day for responders, first responders, but that's, that doesn't, you know, you gotta kind of figure out what, who are you talking about? You're talking about police officers, fire, people of fire department and EMTs, but, but you could have honored those officers who had passed away, and you're gonna vote on it again today, and I hope I don't hear the same arguments that, oh, we want to go back to the way it is now. We get to pick what flags we got, we decide to put up, and we won't pick flags that don't fit our, our interests. And you're not talking about the town's interests, you're talking about the majority Democrats' interests, because the majority of people who I heard at the meeting supported putting up the flag, and you see signs on, on practically every street, back to blue, oh, we support our police. And those signs wouldn't be up there if you had put up the flag. And those are protest signs. Now, now I, um, wait one second. Now, you know, I, I, I hope, I, I'm probably gonna home, go home and watch it on YouTube, because I don't, I don't want to hang around here that long, but, but I hope you do support going back to where it was before, because you guys deciding what to put up is very subjective. It's not objective. Decide, remember what you were saying about the, the blue striped flag? You say, oh, that's a sign of white supremacy and racism, and that's not what it is. The, the flag that represents the police department is not a sign of racism or white supremacy. And, and maybe some radical groups may have co-opted the flag, but that, that's not what it is. And, and I thought it was shameful, you know? And because of it, not just because of that, but because of what I've seen the Democratic Party, I was a Democrat for 20 years, and recently I switched parties. I'm now a Republican.
Rocky, I'm gonna ask you to summarize, the red light is on. Please summarize your comments.
One last sentence, one last sentence. I, I, I just don't like the way things have turned with the Democratic Party. It's turned into a party I don't recognize. Thanks.
Thank you. Further public comment, I'm gonna take hands, Robin, I saw yours, Adam, I saw yours. Robin and Adam, you're on deck. Robin, you're up next.
Robin Barassa, 248 Dale Road. Pretty much everything, I'd like to ditto everything Mr. Karuk just said. Everything that he spoke about is exactly what I wrote about. I was gonna come up here and do the timeline of everything that occurred regarding the flag policy, and I don't think we need to. Almost everybody understands what happened. I think that come June, when, when office, when Counsel Bailey wanted to have the thin blue line flag raised in honor of Officer Pelletier and probably other fallen officers, he asked for the flag to be raised, and the majority on this council just wasn't comfortable. You guys weren't comfortable, you didn't like the flag, you thought it meant something else, and you voted, or you didn't even vote, you just said no, we're not gonna raise this flag. And then I don't think anybody was really prepared for the firestorm that occurred. No one in this town, let alone anybody on this council. We really were kind of the laughingstock of this state as well as this country. It was really disgraceful. It was really disgraceful, very unsettling, very upsetting. And the following few meetings over the summer, I heard counselors say, we need to be kinder. We need to not make negative comments. We shouldn't be calling each other names. And I sat here listening to those, and I could not believe what I was hearing, because I don't think anybody called any of you names. But I certainly heard some of you calling others that supported the thin blue line flag names. As Mr. Karuk said, we were called un-American. We were called racist. It was disgusting and disgraceful. And I sat here through the summer at these meetings, listening to some counselors lecturing us that we needed to use nice language and be kinder. And all along, I was like, I can't believe that you guys are saying this. I never called anybody names, not publicly, not up here. But some of you did refer to us that supported the thin blue line flag in honor of police officers, those names. And then Counselor Carbone actually brought something up that I had been wondering myself. Some of those flags and the organizations that back them were having big ceremonies. And they needed chairs and a podium, and electricity with mics and speakers, and probably police officers for security. And I wondered who was paying that. And Mr. Presley, you said, the money's already been budgeted. It's over time. And I thought, well, I don't really maybe support that flag. In fact, I don't support a lot of flags. I support one flag, the flag of the United States. But I didn't think that was fair, that you made that unilateral decision to use our taxpayer dollars for these big flag-raising ceremonies. Another problem. For some of you, that flag had a negative connotation. Well, some of the flags that this counselor chose don't sit well with me either. And when I've asked, so how do we present a flag for you guys to raise? It was a very gray area. Well, you got to submit it. There's a 30-day wait. There's got to be discussion. It gets presented to the mayor. It gets presented to the town manager. It was very gray. So then we had a counselor wanting to have a flag raised in honor of a fallen police officer, and he was knocked down, because it's something that apparently triggered you guys, when some of the flags that were chosen already trigger some of us. And then the item, the agenda item, got removed unexpectedly at a council meeting a couple months ago. It was really kind of interesting how, last minute, some of the council members knew about that agenda item being removed, and some didn't. And when asked, it was mentioned that you talked to some people, Mayor, and you needed more time. So you've had a couple months, and now we're here. And I do very much thank you and appreciate that it's finally back on the agenda. And I'm urging you all to do the right thing and revert the flag policy to the way it was written and honored for decades, Weathersfield, Connecticut, POW, and the United States of America. I'd like you to stop playing identity politics and start representing the majority, the citizens of Weathersfield as well as the veterans, because you represent 27,000 people, not yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Adam, yes. Thank you, Robin. Adam and I, yep. The lady, you're on deck. You're next, Adam first.
Adam Sossier, 115 Bolter Road. I'm going to just present something. My wife wrote this and submitted to the council as an email, but she can, like, write and research much better than me, so I'm just going to read it. Bringing back the topic to the turf field. I'm opposing the synthetic turf field at Millwoods Park. Individuals running for town council last year made promises that any installed fields would be grass fields, not synthetic turf fields. The Democrats ran on this promise and won majority representation largely because of this issue. When the synthetic turf field installation was proposed at Kaisha Farms last year, Democrats expressed that they were against it. In the meeting minutes from August 21st, 2023, related to Counselor Ken Lesser, it said, "We should be listening to the unanimous decision of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to develop new fields at Millwoods Park based on the availability of the existing infrastructure. Any field should be grass fields." I agree. That same date, the town council mentioned, motioned to approve the full synthetic turf field at Kaisha. Counselor Clancy and Counselor Lesser voted against this motion. What has changed their opinion in this last year? Might never know. How did the council decide that ARPA funds should be used specifically for a synthetic turf field? ARPA funds can be used for upgrading HVAC systems, supporting social service organizations that provide assistance to vulnerable populations in the community, supporting local businesses to promote, stimulate economic development, improve and update town buildings such as the library, community center, and town hall, and expand affordable housing options. For example, the town of Westport approved their ARPA funds for cybersecurity and an affordable housing project. The city of Meriden allocated ARPA funds to replace the HVAC system in their library and City Hall, help small business hardship, provide camp activities for children, and replace fire department vehicles. In addition, Mansfield has considered their ARPA funds for wireless access pavilion at the library to allow people to comfortably sit outside and access Wi-Fi while they work, to provide upgrades to sleeping quarters and lockers for the fire department and police officers, to upgrade fire and emergency service apparatus and equipment, provide affordable housing, expand transportation, lots of things that are not synthetic turf fields. For a town such as Weathersfield that has a spending issue, how did the town decide that installing a synthetic turf field is the best use of these ARPA funds? Unfortunately, we have a lot of grass fields in Weathersfield that are not properly managed already. Although the synthetic turf field may be appealing to the town because of the claim that it does not require upkeep, it's just not true, as already discussed earlier. Most manufacturers guarantee eight years for artificial turf use. That's eight years for something that will most likely cost $1 to $1.5 million now and more when it needs to be replaced every eight to 10 years. Not something you need to pay for with a regular grass field. In 2013, the town of Stonington approved a $1 million artificial turf football field with projected replacement cost of $300 grand. Six years later, the town of Stonington learned that the cost to replace was not $300,000, but it was $1 million. The town of Stonington is no longer funding that $1 million expense in 2024, so now they just have a synthetic turf field sitting there, damaging the environment. I think we can all predict how it would go in the town of Weathersfield in 10 years when the future town council proposes spending an additional $1 million of taxpayer dollars to replace the fields. The ARPA funds are not paying for the full amount of the synthetic turf field. Tax dollars will need to be used to pay the field the full cost. A lot of individuals in the town are requesting new schools and improvements to our current schools. It's important to put our tax dollars and other available funds, like ARPA, to important infrastructure that we actually need, which does not include a synthetic turf field. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Further public comment? Yes.
It's me again. Sorry. Joyce Morset, 31 Robbins Drive. I'm here to speak again about the security at the senior center. And I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but again, it's not on the agenda to be discussed. And I've been here a couple of times in the last couple of months to discuss this. I fear for the seniors that are there every day, like my mother and the nursery school children that are there that are taking classes every day. All doors have access to people coming in and out. There's no fobs or security as far as entry. I know the parking lot is not well-lit. I thought maybe by now we'd have... You said you'd look into it, and I'm sure you are, and I just thought maybe you'd put it on the agenda, but look into a security force, or maybe an officer with a radio, or a camera. A camera would be good. Thank you. A camera would be good, but there's nothing, absolutely nothing. And now I get this public notice saying at the center that they're going to have a special meeting on October 29th and November 4th discussing the new vision of the senior center, Picken Community Center. Well, I don't understand why we have to discuss bathrooms and consignment shops and classrooms and restrooms when, first of all, we have, if you broke ground tomorrow, it wouldn't be done in time. God forbid something happens to the people in the center during the day, these children. That's all I'm asking, is to seriously consider looking into it for me. All right? I'm going to keep coming by, and I hope you're going to be at one of the meetings that they're going to have here in October and November. All right? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Yep, and you're second. Yep, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Zabidio. I'm from 34 Dorland Circle in Weathersfield. I'm here to talk about the sports field, the athletic complex. We trust our town officials to maintain the highest level of excellence in researching and making decisions for our town for the safety, health, and welfare of all residents. I am not against athletics, but I am against taking the last open land in Weathersfield in Millwoods Park and turning it into a special interest athletic complex that will be for only a small percentage of Weathersfield residents and primarily for out-of-town sports teams. In Weathersfield, there are already 18 ball fields, two T-ball fields, 11 soccer lacrosse fields, and numerous other athletic fields that can be used. Weathersfield does not need any more athletic fields. They need to take care of the ones we have, and possibly this grant money could be used to do that. I'm not against, as I said, I'm not against athletics, but Weathersfield has no more space. The cost of this complex will be exponential. The $1.6 million remaining in grant funds will fall far short of covering the costs. This complex is a multimillion-dollar project that will be a huge financial burden on the taxpayers of Weathersfield. I did some research on costs, since we don't have any yet. Turf field, like the ones being proposed, cost between $2.6 million and $3.6 million for one field, and this is from sports venues. Ideal turf company estimates the average maintenance costs for this type of field range from $23,000 to $127,000 per field per year, and maintenance is absolutely critical to these fields. And SportsTurf Management Association, I could only get cost from 2016, estimates replacement cost of one field, which will occur at eight to 10 years, ranges from $700,000 to $850,000 per field. Other additional costs that will happen are the additional personnel needed to maintain the field, additional police for increased crime and traffic in the area, additional emergency medical personnel, pollution remediation, and much more. And the loss of property value of homes in the area will be devastating. Our mill rate just increased by over 2.5 points and is now 43.22. This is the eighth-highest out of 169 towns and cities in Connecticut. Weathersfield cannot bear the overwhelming tax burden of this athletic complex. I know you have a lot of information about the hazards of the product. I just want to make a statement that the artificial turf industry employs many of the same deceptive tactics that were used by the tobacco industry in the '60s. They confuse the science, lie to the public, and package this chemical waste in a fancy fake green wrapper while purposely hiding the known dangers. The plan for Millwoods Park should be to leverage community environmental well-being. The focus should be on green initiatives, which is part of the initiative of the ARPA funds, to include implementing sustainable landscaping practices and adding, not destroying, natural green spaces that promote biodiversity and environmental sustainability. The infrastructure of Millwoods Park should enable, rather than discourage, inclusive and dynamic activities for people of all ages, incomes, and recreational needs. This plan discriminates against and excludes the majority of the Weathersfield residents who have no need for athletic fields, but do have a need for and a right to a safe place to gather, recreate, and enjoy nature. It subjugates the rights of most of Weathersfield residents in favor of the rights of a small percent of Weathersfield residents and the rights of sports teams from out of town who are begging for more fields. We just don't have the room in Weathersfield. Inclusion, public safety, and the preservation of the environment for all ages and abilities and for all residents should be the plan for Millwoods Park. Town officials have a fundamental obligation to protect and plan for the well-being of all residents. We depend on you to do this. The science is out there. We urge you not to gamble with citizens' lives by ignoring this science. This athletic complex will turn Millwoods Park into a landfill of chemical scrap products, polluted air, dead wildlife, failing greenscapes, and toxic cesspools. This athletic complex is a bad decision for players, a bad decision for the environment, a bad decision for Millwoods Park and the community, and will be an unmanageable financial burden for Weathersfield taxpayers. We urge you not to move forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Further public comment? Yes. Donna, you're on deck. Yep, you're, yep, please.
Terry Ferragudo, 100 Griswold Road. I first want to thank the members of our town council for their time and dedication to our town. I also want to specifically thank those members of the council who accepted the invitation to our home on Griswold Road to get a firsthand view of our home and backyard in relation to Millwoods Park, and specifically the location of the proposed improvements. With us, you did walk the existing access road from Griswold Road, noting not only how close the homes located at 106 and 122 Griswold Road would be to the proposed road, but also the opportunity for expansion of the existing parking lots located by the dog park and swimming area. Thank you for taking time out of your day and your weekend to meet and talk with us. I mirror a lot of the comments about the artificial turf, so I don't want to say anything further about that. But looking forward, it is my understanding that only the fields are part of the initial improvement plan, that nothing else is really planned for anything further. And as a resident whose backyard borders the western boundary of that portion of the park, I'm respectfully requesting that the location of the fields be changed to accommodate future parking improvements as an expansion of the existing parking on the eastern side of these fields. I think I speak for my neighbors and myself when I say that we would rather have the parking on the opposite side of the fields from our homes. We don't have a problem with the fields. We live with them. But we really don't want parking lots in our backyard. So I'm just asking that you reconsider the configuration when you do those improvements, because once the fields are laid, they're done. Thank you for the opportunity to express our views, and I hope you'll take these comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And thank you for you and Phil opening your homes to some of us. Thank you very much. John is up next, and I saw her hand here on deck. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Giovanna Erlich. I live at 12 Hunter's Path, and I'm here this evening to speak about my active volunteership in the town for many years. I've had the opportunity to be a volunteer in the town since 2016, when I was one of the founding members of the Lacrosse Association here in town. Since then, I've also had the opportunity to not only stand on board for the Lacrosse Association, but I've also was a member of the Youth Baseball Association, and I'm still a current active member of the Football and Cheer Association as well. So as you can tell, I've put a lot of time and effort and a lot of volunteer hours into this town and have seen a lot of different field space. So I speak for the minimalists of what our organizations need and are asking for. I'm also here to speak once again regarding the desperate need for additional field space for youth sports in the town of Weathersfield. Councilman Durick had created a poll on social media that began another conversation regarding this topic, which has been ongoing since 2018, and I'd like to reiterate my response to the town council. This is a little bit of a subquote from what I had spoken about on social media. "Councilman Durick, I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to walk all the sports fields over the spring, but our town has an extremely difficult time maintaining grass fields. There are tire tracks on fields, weeds, divots that can be a major hazard, rocks, weeds, grass clippings sometimes as long as four inches long left all over the fields for kids to have to try to play sports on. Our baseball fields have clay as hard as cement built over the years of packing it down, poor drainage, lack of safety upgrades. Fuller Field, which is currently used right now for flag football, has zero parking on it. It's a mess in the middle once the rain happens over the spring. High Crest has parking issues, which we are very well aware of, and the safety concerns that come with that. In addition to that, it has drainage issues. Webb Field has drainage issues. Charles White has drainage issues. And it is used in the springtime as a lacrosse field, but it is not a legal-sized field." but it is not a legal-sized field because it's made on an angle. It also supports, it was once a lacrosse field was at the Cove for girls lacrosse, but that's not longer there anymore. It's now made only for boys. However, the Cove has a lot of issues with maintenance, and just recently, over the past weekend, it was the Cove Carnival. And every year in the fall, when the Cove Carnival happens, it's exposed to its yearly trampling and damage on that field because it is used as a community area to celebrate. Our fields are overused, they're not rested, there's not enough manpower to fix it, and they're not really appreciated, sports fields. You know, there's many, many people in town that continue to preach and preach, let's fix what we have. But at this point, we're beyond the threshold of repairs to allow our continuing growing town, and as we heard tonight, our town is growing, to serve and maintain our proper fields for rec activities and sports that are safe and serve with multipurpose. This debate has been ongoing since Keisha Farm was purchased years ago. The bottom line is we need change, and change is tough, but without change, and I've said this before, we cannot grow. While I understand that many people don't play sports, however many people do, and we need to be able to work together to share space. Very soon, my children are going to be all grown up and no longer use park-and-rec activities, but I am hopeful to be steadfast for change so that we can make a path for the future and participants of park-and-rec activities in town so they can enjoy what my kids did enjoy, did not enjoy. I'm hopeful that we'll have an opportunity to create friendships within kids and that they'll be able to have teammates and leadership skills that park-and-rec activities teach. I'm tired of standing here every year pleading for my voice to be heard. I go to park-and-redboard meetings, I go to town council meetings. I am a platform and hopefully making change to occur. I'm showing up and advocating for our fellow youth population who deserve a proper facility and a safe environment to participate in. We were promised at the park-and-rec meeting last week, last winter, by the town manager and a couple other councilmen that come the fall, we would be able to have the beginning stages of a multipurpose turf field being set ground at Millwoods. And yet, here we are again with no shovel in the ground, not digging up any dirt. This is a topic of conversation that has continued to go around in circles for many years. Leaders of the town are voted in to be able to make hard decisions that ensure the best decision for our future of our town. The vote was made two years ago, and then a new group came along and decided to change something that was already made. We need leaders that are willing to stand up and trust the process so our town can grow. Park-and-rec opportunities drive our school growth, our property values, and industry in town. We look around at Newington, Glastonbury, and Rocky Hill. They have all figured this out.
And I'm going to ask you to summarize, please.
Lastly, in the community of "It's not my backyard," how many of us have had grandchildren who play activities on turf? Do we sit there and tell our children, "Nope, you're not going to that sports event today, it's not safe"? How many times do we sit there and speak about, "We want plush, lush, green grass"? What makes it plush, lush, and green? Fertilizers.
Donna, thank you.
Fertilizers have a lot of chemicals in it in order to maintain fields. Thank you very much for listening to me speak. Bottom line is, is we need change in order to support the growth of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Sir, in the back with the red, yes. Yep, you, yep. Sorry, I couldn't.
I'm an old man, I can't read it off my phone.
No, no, no. Thank you for coming up.
Hello, I'm Eve Noiset. I am a resident of Weathersfield, obviously, 91 Coleman Road in Weathersfield, okay? First, I just want to ask the people who are against the fields, two things, okay? Have you ever been to the other towns and see what they have?
Yep, I'm going to ask you to address the council directly and not the public.
Okay.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
My name is Eve Noiset. I'm almost 69 years old, have been a resident in Weathersfield for over 30 years, worked with young people for 30 years as a school guidance counselor, and volunteered for over 20 years coaching kids in town in soccer programs. I live on Coleman Road, part of the 95% in my view, geographically put, of the town, which is not fighting to prevent the turf field being constructed on Keisha Farm. Why do I make this statement? An example: A quick review of who spoke at the August 23, 2023 council meeting reveals the following. 27 townspeople spoke at the meeting against Keisha Farm, partially for, using Keisha Farm as partially for a sports venue. Of those people, 17 lived on Stonegate, Collier Road, Clover Cress Road, Copper Mill Road, Morgan Circle, Griss Mill Road, or Jacob Drive, all in close proximity to Keisha Farm. A couple of folks spoke against the field use at Keisha Farm, but it had nothing to do with a field. For example, one gentleman spoke of wanting a 55 and over community. So in the end, who are the majority of folks working to prevent the addition of a very, very badly needed field or fields in this case? The surrounding streets community. I have also read some written objections about having a field there from folks living on T-Lane, Old Mill Road, Robeth Circle, and Griswold Road, relatively very few people from outside of the Keisha Farm area. Perhaps this group should rename itself the Not in My Neighborhood Friends of Keisha Farm. Moving on, having worked with the youth in town for many, many years, I can tell you firsthand that our field space for athletics for young and old is sorely lacking. Football has played on fields on a hill on one side of the field. I personally have held practices on patches of grass which were not even part of a soccer field, just to have a place to practice. Our fields are often in poor shape in spite of the efforts of our town crews. The field space is simply inadequate space-wise, very much overused due to the volume of kids and teams who utilize them, and the inability to allow the field to rest during, because of the demand. With the addition in recent years of a feeder, field hockey program, which we should be proud of as our field hockey teams have gone from being non-competitive to reaching state high school semifinals and lacrosse, it has only gotten worse. In my later years, meaning now, I have become a high school soccer referee. When the, when this fall season comes to a close, I will have refereed about 50, mostly varsity, boys and girls soccer games in central Connecticut. I don't need the money. I do this to give back as referees are sorely needed. Which leads me to the turf fields. This Not in My Neighborhood group has often used as a rationale for not allowing a turf field, some obscure studies they have found to imply that turf fields are unsafe. Well, I can tell you that of the roughly 50 games I have refereed this fall, one town, Bolton, did not have their team playing on a turf field. Following the logic of this group, I guess that all of these other venues and towns are unconcerned about the safety of their kids and citizens. In fact, as I mentioned at another meeting I attended about this issue, our flagship university, the University of Connecticut, has recently installed several turf fields for use by their student athletes and students in general. I also, because I am interested due to my previous work as a school counselor, recently, week ago, visited Ithaca College and Binghamton University, both in New York State, to see that they have beautiful, and in some cases, new turf fields. One last thought regarding turf fields, and then I'll just pause for a second. Those of you who feel it's inappropriate, excuse me, to feel it appropriate to question the safety of turf fields and express such great concerns, I have one question I'd like to ask. Which of you concerned citizens who have had either your own children or grandchildren or your neighbor's kids who play an outdoor sport, or maybe are part of the school band or cheerleading or dance teams, has ever approached the town council about your safety concerns wanting to remove the turf field at the high school for safety reasons? After all, our kids and townspeople are on these fields on a very regular basis. Anyone? I'll give you a moment. No, I don't think so. I guess you're not that concerned, then. No, this is largely, not completely, a neighborhood issue, not in my neighborhood.
Eve, excuse me, I'm going to ask you to summarize, please.
Okay, I'm almost done. Okay, let me see. The propaganda that this group, about 71% of town residents not wanting multiple use of court, uh, okay.
Eve, thank you. There is another five minutes after, you can, you can speak after. Thank you. Further, thank you. Further public comment? Yes, ma'am, right here. And then, I think there's one in the way back after, but go ahead.
I don't need my glasses. Kim Lawrence, 168 Morgan Circle, former secretary of the Board of Directors of Keisha Farm. I am here, not surprisingly, to discuss the synthetic turf farm situation. Millwoods has always been and should always be the place for athletic fields. I understand that there is a tremendous, I don't even know what the word is, discrepancy, I don't even know what the words are I'm looking for right now. I understand you need athletic fields, they're poorly maintained, we hear the same thing every single time we do this. We all know that, well, I think you, we all know at this point that synthetic turf fields are carcinogenic, they create neurotoxins, they destroy the earth below them, they're not recyclable, they only last for like eight to 15 years. So I guess in my mind, what's the plan down the road as to what you're going to do after the eight to 15 years is up? And it's already very expensive, but further to, I believe it was Daniel, who mentioned that the maintenance, somebody would have to learn, so there'd be education that you have to add to the table, so further training to education of how to properly maintain the synthetic turf fields, the leaching into the waterways, the killing of the wildlife, the, I mean, the list just keeps going on and on and on, the gift that just keeps on giving. And so, I guess for me to decide whether I want to stay in Weathersfield or not, it's whether or not the town council and the people who make the decisions are actually here and we elect you to actually make the decisions for the greater good. Just because everyone else or every other town has, I know everybody's all about the superficial stuff and they want to, you know, we need to be the best, we need to look the best, well, it's not about that, it's about perpetuating the horrible environmental impact, the impact on people's health. I mean, to me, it's, I don't know, maybe because I researched the heck out of everything, might be my legal background, which also maybe makes me think, when you're planning the future here as far as what you're going to do there, maybe you want to put aside some reserves as well, because you're going to have a lot of class action lawsuits, I'm guessing, that are going to eventually show all the research that is 100% connected to all the carcinogens, the PFOS, the neurotoxins, the endocrine disruptors, everything that they've been saying for years and years and years. So it's not that we should actually be slapping down a synthetic turf field right now because that's what we think is going to be great right now. It's looking at the future and actually see the end result and what we're going to have to pay for at the end of the day, not only the health, but financially as well and the environment. They also mentioned the, the fields, the synthetic turf fields can get up to 50 degrees hotter than a regular turf field, so not only would your children be absorbing carcinogens and all that other great stuff, but there are also potential heat exhaustion and things like that, so at the most minimal level. But anyway, so I was a little all over the place, but I was trying to address a whole bunch of things I saw just now. But again, with the legal background, I definitely recommend having some kind of reserve set aside for future class action lawsuits. That's all. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Further public comment? I think I see Christine, and you're on deck in the way back, yep. Is that Christine? Yep.
Christine Kelly LaSella, 37 Belmont Street. So I have like some thoughts going forward about the Millwoods Park situation. The first thing is, our town is, is great. We are, a lot of history, a lot of tradition in this town. I don't know why everybody is like, well, we got to do, you know, keep up with the Joneses and all that stuff, and we've got to do all these, these things that cost so much money because all the other towns do it. I've lived here my whole life, and I don't see a problem with people wanting to live in Weathersfield. The sad thing is I'm hearing people wanting to leave because of certain things. I'm not one of them, but you know, that's me. But the whole Millwoods thing, I think, is being rushed because your guys' backs are against a wall, and maybe that's not your fault because none of you, maybe Mr. Mayor, you were on the council in 2018? But I feel like this situation's being rushed, and I'm looking, I have it on my phone, and there's actually two turf fields, or there's going to be one and then maybe another one. And I went up there and walked around, and my first thought was, how unfair to the residents on Griswold Road that you would actually consider putting a parking lot behind their houses for what we all pay and yourselves included? And I know where all of you live because I looked you up. None of you are in jeopardy of having a parking lot behind your house because of where you live. I'm not in jeopardy of it, but it's not fair. And I mean, fair is fair. And to be able to look at anybody that lives in that neighborhood and say, oh, well, we're going to lose the money, you know, it's all we can do, putting a road right there, figure out a different way if you're going to stuff those fields in there. But my, my main point, I think, was going back to 2018, the referendum went out to purchase Keisha Farm. I've already said this to you, I voted no, do not buy that farm. But the way it read, and I have three different articles here, mentioned sports fields, athletic fields. 470-something residents were polled, 70% or so wanted multi-use up there, which included athletic fields. So I just, I just copied three, you know, little articles that I found online. So I guess my question, and maybe, and I'm not being funny, call Amy Bello and ask her, what was the plan in 2018? You, she brought that plan to you all, let's buy this farm, and guess what? COVID wasn't here, so neither was ARPA funding. How was the town of Weathersfield putting fields up there? The other thing is, the public voted, so I'm not sure why the people in the High Crest District or on Stonegate, and I'm not being disrespectful, maybe they did vote against purchasing the farm? But the voters had it, the yeas had it, right? And I said that to you when I was up here months ago, you had like 1,400 more yes votes to purchase Keisha Farm than the noes. I suspect it's the athletic community, and I told you my brother-in-law was involved in sending emails out about, you know, getting the athletic people to come forward, and I love sports, I'm all for it, but put the field at Keisha Farm, that's what people voted for. It's egg on your face to turn around and say, well, we're not going to do what we said we were. That was a referendum. Millwoods is, yes, and I also said this, finish the Millwoods plan. We've had that floating around since 2002, and we paid 50 grand for it. So I just think cramming everything into Millwoods and making a rash decision because we have to spend this money. I walked around there the last week or so, and there's a classic Little League field up there that needs help. There is the snack shack that hasn't been used in years. Take the ARPA money and, you know, I'm sorry to say it, fix what we have, put a field on Keisha, and then maybe sometime down the road, we all can sit back and really examine how to put a field in that space, do that. But that's just my opinion. I think people pay enough in taxes and deserve a quality of life. They don't deserve to be, you know, just say, well, too bad, that's what we're going to do. And again, COVID wasn't here when we bought the farm, so somebody must know what the plan was in 2018 to put a field and where that money was coming from. And I think you can find plenty of things, and I've talked to people that work in this town that know there's a lot of things we've band-aided, so maybe let's stop band-aiding. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Further public comment? Yes, I don't know if there's any other hands on this side. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, you can go for next. Thank you for waiting.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jane Morgan. I'm the owner of Winding Brook turf farm, and I am very upset that I have not heard a word about what you did with the plan and why you're taking part of our field to do Strange things what you're going to do. First of all, there's no way that I would give you a half an acre of our land. Secondly, I think it's very dangerous to have something like that on Griswold Road when I have 15 when I have 15 tractor trailers on the, on the road going back and, back and forth to my house, I mean, to my farm. So I'm extremely upset about the whole thing and why you would put artificial sod there when you have a turf farm right next to you. And I believe my son, Jack, spoke here months ago about Keisha's farm. And I'm very, very upset about the whole thing, especially because I never heard a word about that you were going to take part of our field on Griswold Road, which is not going to happen. And if you were ever going to finish doing this, you will have to put a big fence up there so it shuts off between Millwoods and Winding Brook turf farm. Because I can't have everybody walking on our field, which is our bread and butter. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Eileen Godbout. I live on Griswold Road, but not on the side of the street as a park. So it literally is not in my backyard. I attended Mitchell School. I'm a longtime and frequent Milluse Park patron. While there, I swim in the pond, hike the trails, watch baseball, tennis, frisbees, soccer, softball, basketball, cricket, skateboarders, fishermen and picnickers all the time. The most frequent users of the park are the walkers, both those with and without dogs. One thing I don't see as often are folks on the fenced-in, locked-up tight, lighted baseball field. That field is for someone's exclusive use and not open for everyone's use. I believe the proposed artificial turf field would also be of limited use to the general population. And worse, it would take away space that is currently in constant use by our residents. Our urban forested park is popular with many citizens of all ages and interests, from the children enjoying the playscape, groups of older residents enjoying bocce, the pavilion, the shade and the beautiful grass fields. There's much to love about Millwoods Park. What the park does not need is additional locked-up athletic fields, fields made of artificial turf, another road or impermeable parking areas. We're here tonight to focus on artificial turf. And although I have lots of ideas to share, I'm going to focus my further remarks on some of the many reasons we should not approve this plan and we should not, we should say no to artificial turf fields. I know it's redundant, but I feel it's necessary because I, like many others here, do not feel that I'm being listened to. According to the pros, keeping up with turf field maintenance is critical to a field's overall longevity. As many people on both sides have pointed out, it's a problem in Weathersfield. We're not good about maintaining our fields. A well-maintained field is crucial for aesthetics and for the performance and safety of the players. We don't take care of what we have, why would this be different? Artificial grass infill is needed regularly. Again, maintaining parks is not our town's strength. Professional teams are needed for artificial turf cleaning. Has the upgrade of this proposed surface been planned for? You need to regularly use leaf blower to thoroughly clean an artificial field and to brush it or otherwise groom your turf fibers when they appear flattened. The proposed location is inhabited by hundreds, if not thousands, of geese and the mess they leave behind is no joke. I supervise recess on an artificial turf courtyard every single day. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, bird poop does not wash away nor does spit or gum. The turf rips and tears and kids get hurt all the time. And yes, it's very hot, right through the sneakers, they feel the heat. The installation process for artificial turf is extremely involved and you'll need to replace it before you know it. You need to consider how to keep your turf in place, how to prevent turf pellets from leaving the field and how to prevent skin injuries. Artificial turfs do more harm than good. They have large carbon footprints and the toxic substances they're made of end up as forever waste. Who do you think might know more about artificial turf than the NFL? The NFL Players Association has called for the elimination of artificial turf fields repeatedly. Data overwhelmingly shows artificial turf creates unnecessary injuries. Moving our stadium fields to high-quality natural turf is said to be the easiest decision the NFL can make. The players overwhelmingly prefer natural grass. Ultimately, the legal save money because of the lack of injuries on natural grass. The fact that we are considering installing an artificial turf field, in my opinion, is insane. Currently, we have a beautiful park with playing fields and a little forest. We can't take these spaces for granted. They're irreplaceable. The bucolic view we all enjoy will be forever ruined by the installation of these artificial turf fields. I implore you, please do not support the current plan for Millwoods Park and please vote no tonight.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you. Further council comment, I see Dan and then I see in the back a couple of hands. So Dan, do you have your hand up? Yep, there's like three in the back row too. You guys are all, we'll get, we'll get everyone and we have another five minutes at the end as well, at the end of the meeting.
My name is Dan O'Connor, 49 Broad Street. First, I'd like to thank all the councilors for volunteering their time. I know most people don't come up here and thank you for anything. They generally come up here for another reason. Sadly, this might be me too. I'm here to speak on two issues. One is the flag policy and the other is the fields at Millwoods. The first one of the flag policy is I do understand that that's up for vote and I'm hoping you will resort back to the original policy. But I do have a concern that if you decide to grandfather existing flags that have now flown under your policy, then that will lead to even bigger problems. As you know, the policy you guys put in place divided the town between police and citizens. And if you decide to grandfather existing flags, well, then here's my request. The third Sunday in May every year is known as the Irish famine commemoration day. It's in honor of the millions of Irish that were genocide by the British during the potato famine. And I'll give you a little history lesson on the potato famine. It wasn't a potato famine, it was a potato blight. And what happened was there were enough potatoes to feed the Irish, but the British made the Irish pick the potatoes and send them to England. And the Irish had to fight over the blighted potatoes and that's why over a million of them died. That is genocide. And I think on the third Sunday in May, if we're going to use the current flag policy, the Irish flag should fly in commemoration of the millions that died during that. And I bring this up because I did support the idea of Councilor Durick when he said he wanted to fly the Bosnian flag because if we're going to commemorate these horrible tragedies to say that we still think of them, then there's no reason not to fly the Irish flag. I would also like to ask that, we formally request that on May 15th, which is known as the Peace Officers Memorial Day, which pays tribute to local, state and federal peace officers who have died or been disabled in line of duty, I would like to give you guys an opportunity to correct the wrong and fly the thin blue line on May 15th. If we're going to resort to the exist, if we're going to stay with the existing policy, then those are my two requests. My other discussion point is today regarding the fields. In 2018, the town purchased Keisha Farms. At that time, the town council was led by Amy Bello and the Keisha Farms Committee, which was basically an extension of the Democratic Town Committee. Amy and her Democratic councilors marked the purchase as our last chance to secure fields for our youth sports programs. And if anyone wants to see the documentation on that, I will gladly provide that. They even went to planning and zoning, got a field approved for, they got approval for playing fields on Keisha. Once the purchase was made by the voters, the Democrat council led by Amy Bello and Mary Breton pulled a bait and switch. You see, what Mary Breton failed to tell everybody is she was an abutten neighbor and never wanted the field in the first place, she just wanted the land to remain vacant. So when she was off the council, somehow she convinced this sitting council here that basically, I don't want it there, so let's dump it in someone else's backyard. And that backyard happens to be Millwoods. These are undisputable facts. And if anybody wants to look at them, they're pretty easily found and can easily be proved. But the facts don't change anything because a bipartisan council supported a turf field at Keisha Farms. A bipartisan council supported a turf field at Keisha Farms. They allocated the funding. And then for reasons I will never understand, an unelected citizen was able to convince a council to ignore that and let's just put it in someone else's backyard because as the gentleman who spoke earlier stated, is they didn't want it in their backyard. And all the issues, and I think it's very telling that none of those people are here tonight from that Keisha Farms committee meeting because the bottom line is, why should they be? They got what they wanted. They didn't have it in their backyard despite the fact that the town actually so bought that field and sold it to the residents of this town as a sports field, our last chance for sports field. And the question I'll end with is every one of the Democratic councilors up here campaigned in Weathersfield life that they supported a grass field at Keisha Farms. Where is that grass field? It's been over a year, not a shovel has been stuck in the ground. And Mrs. Morgan pointed out, her son came up here and offered to do it for free. And if I recall, the Republicans were ridiculed and ripped apart for not accepting that wonderful generous offer and taking advantage of it.
I ask you to summarize, Dan.
You chose not to do anything with that. So my attitude is why don't you do the right thing? Put the field where the town asked you to put it? Stop harassing the neighbors on Griswold.
Thank you, Dan.
Use Keisha Farms for what it was designed to be used for.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council members. My name is Tom Betts. I live at 187 Griswold Road. The $1.5 million that you were considering using for a synthetic turf field were awarded to Connecticut through the American Recovery Plan Act, a piece of legislation intended to help state and local governments protect the health and well-being of their citizens by replacing revenue lost during the COVID-19 pandemic. Municipalities were given broad discretion in how they apply these funds. But guidance from the Department of Treasury states that capital expenditures should be related and reasonably proportional to an impact of the pandemic and reasonably designed to benefit the impacted population group. To spend approximately 20% of the $7.7 million given to the town on a project that will benefit one group of the population while harming other groups of the population goes against the intended use of these funds. The term multi-use synthetic field is a misnomer. Synthetic fields are intended for competitive youth sports. For small children who run around and fall down and get turf burn, they're not as good as grass fields. For elders and dog walkers who walk through Millwoods every day to be in green space and breathe fresh air, grass fields are a blessing. Synthetic fields are a disservice. This funding could have been appropriated to support early childhood education or elder care and security in town, supporting populations that experienced the worst impacts of the pandemic. Instead, this council wants to permanently alter space that is primarily used by these underrepresented demographics, rendering it unusable for them, to exceed to the demands of parents of children playing competitive sports, a group that has the mobility and opportunity that other groups of the population who use the park more do not have. Even if you're skeptical of the mounting research showing that the health, the negative health effects of artificial turf, the environmental impacts are well-established. The Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has a webpage dedicated to risk assessment of artificial turf fields. Sampling analysis of stormwater runoff shows that zinc and total effluent concentrations from artificial turf fields exceed acute aquatic toxicity criteria for surface water. What about this council's obligation to keep Millwoods usable for the children who I see fishing there all the time or elders who birdwatch? How can artificial turf be multi-use when it serves one group exclusively and impedes on the ability of others to use this public space? Applying this funding towards a grass field, a grass turf field, would keep this public park as a place for everyone. Is this council going to listen to the residents of the town who use the park every day? Or a private consultant who has been on the board for a lobby group representing the artificial turf industry? Please do the right thing and amend the motion to not necessitate a synthetic field and rather support a grass field. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jim, and there's someone in the back who had a hand up. Someone back there. And then Jim, you had your hand up. Yep, ma'am, yes.
Hi, my name is Kate Betts. I live at 187 Griswold Road. And I would like to speak a bit about the artificial turf. And I do want to harp again a bit on the health implications. So I have a question. Have any of you actually been an athlete who played on artificial turf? Like on a team, not coaching your kids or, you know, walking by, but actually played day after day throughout a whole season? Because I have and I can attest to what it was like. I'm 26 now, I wasn't in high school that long ago. So I remember it. I remember that it would be unfathomably hot. I know that the pieces of turf would get all over my hair and my skin and my uniform, they would be in my cleats. And I remember that I would get these horrible turf burns all over my legs and my arms. Have any of you actually experienced any of those? And you know, the, I didn't know at the time that there were possible negative health implications to any of this. You know, I was a kid playing sports, it wasn't my job to know. But it was the job of people like you who were supposed to be making informed, responsible decisions regarding things like this. So I would like to ask you, where are you getting your information to inform this decision about the safety of the artificial turf? Because if you are getting it from that man who has made this plan, who wants this contract, who is selling this to you, it seems like a really obvious conflict of interest. You know, it's to their benefit to obfuscate the risks. And as my brother just said, he served on the Board of Directors for the Synthetic Turf Council for years. That seems like a huge red flag and a reason to take his remarks with a giant grain of salt. So I'd hope that in an effort to make an informed decision, you might have sought information from outside sources. I personally have sent you some of the mounting scientific research that clearly says that artificial turf is fundamentally unsafe for human health. Qualified professionals, doctors and scientists have repeatedly now confirmed the presence of chemicals causally linked to cancer and brain damage and impaired reproductive health. The Children's Environmental Health Center specifically recommends against the installation of artificial turf fields due to these safety risks and because of the particularly high risk that all of these chemicals and these factors are posing to children specifically, who are the intended users of this field. And you know, I want to point out that I understand that things are changing very rapidly when it comes to what we know here. You know, I'm a firm believer in doing the best you can with the information you have at the time. And maybe when this plan originated, you did not have all this information. But new studies are coming out all the time. It's becoming increasingly clear and there is nothing wrong with changing your mind in relation to new information. I want to point out also that laws and public opinion are changing rapidly regarding artificial turf. So PFAS, which is one of the dangerous substances in artificial turf, is in the process of being banned all around the country, in Connecticut specifically. Just this past June, there was a law passed that banned PFAS in a ton of consumer products, specifically due to the dangers to human health and the environmental concerns. There's also a bill in the Connecticut State House that would entirely prohibit state and municipal contracts for the purchase and installation of artificial turf fields. And even though that has not yet been signed into law, that is clearly the direction that things are heading. In the state of New York, they've already passed legislation banning artificial turf containing PFAS and they are also considering legislation to ban artificial turf fields altogether. A growing list of communities across the country have passed their own moratoriums on installing artificial turf, including other towns in Connecticut and New York and Massachusetts. Clearly, the laws and public opinion are catching up with this research quicker and quicker that shows that it poses extreme dangers to both human and environmental health. And this is not something that you should invest our resources in knowing what you know at this time. You should be striving to keep Weathersfield ahead of the curve on issues like this, not dragging us back to the past. You know, these are the kind of issues that younger constituents like myself care a lot about, the people who are going to be voting for you increasingly in the future and people who you might want to attract to the town in the future. I also want to touch briefly on something that a lot of younger people also care about, the well-known, well-documented environmental impacts of artificial turf. In the year 2024, to choose to do something that would unequivocally actively cause harm to the environment in this way is unconscionable. However you vote in favor of artificial turf, at the very least, you have the responsibility to conduct an independent, not through that company, environmental impact assessment and publish the results, which I hope will enable you to better inform your decision. And there is an alternative solution here. I have sent you information on ameliorating the existing grass boards fields. There is no reason why in a sunny, beautiful park next to a turf farm where people literally pay for the grass because it is so beautiful that you need to install chemical grass. That is insane. There is no reason why we cannot fix the existing drainage problems and enable these grass fields to maintain flexible use that can benefit all members of the community. And we can also not willingly ignore medicine and science and create environmental and health hazards of epic proportions. I implore you to listen to reason and think about what you want your legacy in this town to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment. In the back, Jim, I have you. Jim, go ahead, and then in the back.
Jim Pettit, 88 Griswold Road. For those officials that were able to walk through Mill Woods with my neighbors and I, I consider to thank you for your courtesy and time. We learned a few things, and I think they shared and learned a few things from us as well. The more honest information is needed, which is exactly what is missing for all of us, final plans and more honest information, just as simple as that. I have heard that the votes from the rec board that it was unanimous to go forward with the artificial turf. And I heard from my neighbors and other friends that are unanimously opposed. But most importantly, we, the people, don't know enough about the final plans, the costs, the dangers. How much will this raise our taxes? And we all know it will. What are the specifications being used to go out to bid? What qualifications for the person writing those bids? Maybe the town will hire an artificial turf sales rep to help them write them. I hope not. Does anyone know exactly what materials will be used to construct the underlay in the artificial turf field? Will it be as toxic and cancer-causing as smoking? Why do you wear sunscreen when you're at the beach? Dangers of skin cancer, same with the artificial turf. Who will vote to intentionally put your children at risk to toxic and cancer-causing materials? I wouldn't allow my children to play on that field. Council members, you do not have to do this. There is a possible, simple solution. Nothing's ever simple, though. One, table the agenda item. Vote it down. Two, allow the town manager to spend those millions of dollars on other needs of Weathersfield. He told me when I called, and I hope I won't quote him, but paraphrasing, he told me that if this doesn't go through, he has many other projects to spend those funds making improvements to Weathersfield. If done properly, we will not have to lose those funds. They will be allocated to lowering taxes, which is the intent, and related pressing town needs. Three, allow the future of Mill Woods to go to a town referendum, just like Keisha Fields. I believe that's what happened. I wasn't here then. Oh, no, I was here, but I didn't remember what happened. After several public, go to a referendum after several public informational sessions. Allow democracy to work. Take the time to hold more public hearings to explain all of the plans. I have faith in the citizens of Weathersfield to accept the outcome if it is an informed and honest decision, discussion, I should say. But we need to share more information for those final plans and listen to each other. Or do you know the final plans and cost already? If not, how can you vote on it? If you do know, tell us. Show us why we trusted you. I ask each of you, do you trust us? This is not about changing a street name or the hours of a pool that is open. This park is part of the fiber and character of our community. This park touches all of us. Allow all of us to be part of that decision by taking it to referendum. Allow informed decisions to be part of that decision and to guide our future by voting on this very important issue. Allow one of our greatest freedoms to ring strong and two for all of us. Vote no.
Thank you, Jim. Sir in the back.
Hi, Mike Betts, 187 Griswold Road. So tough act to follow all these comments. You know, all my points were already made, so I'm going to focus on one, which is the big decision you have tonight, right? How do you vote? Well, my suggestion is that there's one word that is holding us from being together as a community, and that word is synthetic. Simply changing that word would allow us all, I think everyone here supports improving the fields, improving not only the one field which we would fix with this existing proposal, but using that money to fix lots of those fields, including the field that would be right next door to it. So my position and suggestion to you is to strike that word from the ARPA proposal. Now, my understanding is that the relocation of ARPA funds can happen within days when the original intent of the project is maintained. So in this case, the original intent is to improve the fields. Let's improve them. Let's make them natural. They're a fraction of the cost. Instead of spending $1.5 million on one field, we can spend $250,000 on many fields. So let's use the money wisely, and let's change the ARPA project to be natural fields, and let's get the money and use it to improve the fields. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment. Here, and then Mr. Woodward, you're on deck.
Mike Snow, 52, Black Birch Road. My focus is just to say to approve the turf field. Quite frankly, just because it's the only thing on the table that's going to move us forward for more sports fields for the kids. I have three boys, four, four and five years old. I don't think they care if they want to play on a turf field, grass field, middle of the street. I don't think we can maintain the grass fields, and I think it's going to take a long time for us to figure that out, right? So I coach soccer on Saturdays at High Crest. Some of you, I'm sure your kids are out of sports, you don't really know how bad it is. But when you're looking five-year-olds in the face, and it's halftime of a soccer game, and you say, okay, guys, this half, we get to go uphill. That's terrible. So at least I know a turf field's going to be flat. It's going to be there, and I think it puts us on a step that we say, okay, here's a turf field in the middle of this place, in the middle of this park. Now, how do we build off that to put a palace of a park and a sports complex that we can all be proud of and not go to other towns and want to be better? Right? Because most of the people I hang out with in town have little kids in elementary schools, they're playing sports, and on the weekends, we all go there, and it's either a dust bowl or a mud pit. I don't know how we can fix that. And I know a turf field's not going to be a dust bowl or a mud pit, so that's why I'm in favor of it, and you should approve it so we can actually move forward instead of keep going around in circles for, I think, six years now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Woodward, you're up next. Thank you, Mike.
Bob Woodward, 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield. A lot of what I thought I was going to say has been said. First of all, I would ask, whatever you're going to vote, please make it clear so that I don't have to ask what you're voting on. I got lost the last time, and it's important that we know. And maybe some year, you should get something that will show what's out there on certain motions that are more than simple. Number two, when I left here the last time, the next day I called Kathy Bagley's office, and I said, what about a real turf field? Windingsburg Turf Farm is right up the street, never dreaming that they would be here tonight. They've been in, Windingsburg Turf Farm's been in Weathersfield for a long time. The trucks go by my house because I think they grow them out in the meadows. We're always talking about supporting local business. Maybe it's time to think about that. Former Deputy Mayor Mazzarella talked about the park being founded 80 years ago at the last meeting. What was the intention? Was it a park or a sports complex? Think about that one. They gave us this field, this park. Was it for sports or was it for a park? Are there other places out there? I left this question with Kathy Bagley's office, too. What about Wilkes Farm? We've talked about the barn and the house and wanting to get rid of it. Is it possible to put something there? Is it still possible to go back to Casia Farm and put something? So we spread out the fields. Thank you for going up to see the neighbors. Conversation and communication are always helpful. And I would hope that before this is through, there will be some more conversation and communication to figure out what would be appropriate, what might work in Mill Woods Park without changing the essence of it too much. And lastly, I'm going to ask you, with this motion that's out there, does that mean the road through Mill Woods Park is dead, or is it coming back, or is it up in the air? At least I need some clarification on that, please. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much. Further public comment. Mr. Young.
Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for years, back at the turn of the century. And it seems like back then, it was business. Now it's expanded into so many other places that who wants to sit around and listen to all this stuff? And who wants to pay for it? You know, the Mill Woods Park thing, looking at the map that you have on your agenda and at the last meeting, it seemed like everything in there is rammed and jammed. And as many speakers have spoke tonight, I agree with many of them about voting no. I don't think turf belongs in there, and I don't think all that other junk needs to go in there. It won't be a park anymore if you put any of that in there, and that includes your pickleball. My suggestion is you should take that pickleball money, you should take that turf money and put it on roofs. We have leaking roofs in town. We have roads that stink, and you haven't done a good job at all on repairing any of And I believe that this turf thing is bad for people's health. And I also believe, and I'm glad, Mrs. Morgan, who I'd never seen before, came to this meeting tonight and spoke, and I hope she doesn't give you one single inch of her property because you're not worthy of it. You're not worthy of anything. You're not worthy of the taxes I pay in this town. Then we have the flag issue. You should turn the flag issue back to where it was before. There's four, that's it. No more. We spent a horrendous time on that flag. You've gone national on that flag, and what an embarrassment this whole GD Council is over that flag policy. So I'm tired of listening to all this crap. We have business to do. Next. At the last town council meeting, I was cut off due to your five-minute rule. And you know that five-minute rule, Mayor, is just another infringement on public rights to speak. We should be able to come up here and speak our minds as long as it takes. It was back in 2005 when the chairperson of the town council decided with his group of friends behind closed doors to eliminate the last section of the town council meetings. And that went on for a long time. They only had one time during the meeting that public comment could occur, and that was at the beginning. And if you heard something that you wanted to talk about, you had to come back the next meeting and pick up at that point. And what a disgrace. That went on until, I believe it was 2011, from 2005. It was a long period of time. And Mr. Forrest was on that council and voted to shut off the public to speak at the end of the meetings. Mr. Forrest has done a lot of damage to this town. I can't understand how he still comes up here, and he's now deputy mayor. But you know, there's a lot of other bad things going on. And because of your five minutes, my discussions with you get stretched out so far. And it's bad. It's a bad policy, five minutes, because there's things going on that you would be able to find out and resolve, which you don't know, you don't care. So I'm going to pick up where I left off last time. I see I only have 28 seconds left, which I think is a pretty damn ugly disgrace of this town council. Who set this up? January of this year, we have a police officer, January of this year, who now comes to these meetings, and he protects somebody here when he should be out on the highway catching crooks and people who go through red lights.
Please summarize, Mr. Young.
I know my time is up, that's why I didn't bother going into what I'm going to talk about. But I'll tell you, Mayor, I'm very proud to tell you, I don't vote for any of you people.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you. Further public comment. Tom.
Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walcott Hill Road. Definition of a park. A public area of land in a city or town where people can walk, play and relax. Another definition was an area maintained in its natural state as a public property, an area of land usually in a larger natural state for the enjoyment of the public, having facilities for rest and recreation. I hope the council members took a few minutes and looked at that article by the Historical Society on how Mill Woods came to be. I thought it was interesting. Would have only taken you five minutes. I don't believe a park, a definition of a park includes a sports complex. I believe in its current state, it's overbuilt to be a park. Nevertheless, it is what it is, and I don't think we should expand it one bit. If you want to do drainage on an existing field to correct a problem, then spend the money on drainage and fix that field. We've heard from Kathy Bagley numerous times, the fields in town, they were nothing more than somewhat level areas of grass that we decided to cut the grass and line the fields and use them as playing fields. They were never built as true athletic fields. They don't have the proper drainage, and they don't work. Back in 2018, I've said it before, I'll just breeze through it. The plan was brought forward at a Planning and Zoning Committee Commission meeting to purchase Keisha Farms, and the intent was for recreational fields. We were told by Kathy Bagley that there was no more land available in town to put athletic fields, and we needed that space. Mill Woods has fields on top of other playing fields, and that there's no more room. So we came up with a plan of trying to meet everybody's requirements, and we put fields at Keisha Farm. We put walking trails. We put community gardens and other amenities. Well, that wasn't good enough. It was a group of people that spread the word that if you elect the Democrats, we're going to move that and put grass fields there. There's a postcard to the area residents, no to traffic, artificial turf, massive cuts, loss of open space, keep Keisha green, vote November 7th, Row A, protect our neighborhood. But it's not in my backyard, but protect our neighborhood. On the 26th of October of last year... On the 26th of October of last year, it was a nice meeting that was held at the couple of people's residence up there. Meet the Weathersfield Democratic candidates. Keeping Keisha green. Natural athletic fields. Oh, look, everybody here was there, except Deputy Mayor Forrest. Mayor was there, Councilor Rhodes, Councilor Clancy, Councilor Zambrello, Councilor Durek. Vote for us, and we'll put grass fields at Keisha Farm. Now look where we are. Turf fields, jamming into Millwoods. There is not enough room there. Have to go to my next topic. I got, I got the yellow light, 41 seconds. I'm going to deliver this. Verified intervention pleading, as provided by Section 22A-19 in the Connecticut General To put a stop to this field amenities at Millwoods. Originals for you, Sue. This is for the council. I had a lot more to say, but we'll leave it at that. I have a two-pronged approach. I'm filing this pleading with the council, and I'm also going to move to...
Please summarize, Tom.
Yep, I got second there. I'm also going to move to force a referendum by getting 1,000 votes, signatures, force a referendum. This will be put on hold, and it's never going to be resolved by 12:31. So I think you should find other things to spend the ARPA funds on.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Does anybody else from the public want to speak? Seeing no other public comment at this time, I'm going to move on the agenda to council reports. Does any... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. My apologies, sir. Come on up. No, please come up.
Steve Kelly, 29, Old Smithy Lane. I just wanted to talk about the Millwoods plan. I don't know who authorized it, who double-checked it, or who really looked into seeing how practical this was. I'll even just start coming down the main road, which is known as Dick Dobmeier Way. They couldn't even spell his name correctly, so that was pretty embarrassing. But moving right along, I played softball up there for years and years. I've got grandson playing there now. Field two, just to start there, you're going to put pickleball courts out there. But you're going to have to supply them with football helmets and shoulder pads, because these guys easily hit the ball close to 300 feet. And balls go out there all the time where you have that area. And you're going to cram a parking lot into there. You know, other than that, that's just a crazy notion of a place to put it. Now, when you go up to fields where Fields 3 and 4 were, and Field 5, which is where you're going to put the artificial turf fields, you're going to lose Fields 3 and 4, but you're going to move them down near the ambulance, and you're going to back them up to each other. So try and visualize, you're the center fielder for the team on Field 3. You're going to be looking at the center fielder for Field 4, because those fields are crammed in way too close. So that's not going to work. Plus, it's going to cost you extra money just trying to build those fields. So you're just trying to put too much stuff into a beautiful, open-area park. I would suggest that if that soccer field, I've never played soccer up there, but if it's not level, you go in there and level it out, put grass back in there, try and work a deal with the turf farm. But, you know, it's a multi-use. They play softball there in the spring and the summer, and they play soccer in the fall. You don't have to destroy Millwoods trying to solve everybody's problem. As far as pickleball goes, you could utilize, they do this in Florida, I know, utilize tennis courts. You have certain hours for each sport. Most people that are playing pickleball, I've noticed, are elderly, so they're available during the day. I mean, there's a million solutions to keep Millwoods, Millwoods, rather than trying to cut out little diagrams of things and stick them on and hope it's going to work. It isn't, you know? Parking's always been sort of a different thing up there, but we can buy it. Sometimes they have to park on the grass. It's not the end of the world. The grass comes right back. But before you go crazy with that, I mean, whatever you're going to do with Keisha Farms, I'm not going to address that. Whatever got it passed in the first place, you're going to have to look at that separately. But I'm just here to speak about keeping Millwoods the way it has been. It works now, it's not broke, you don't have to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Further public comment. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to move on the agenda to council reports. Does any councillor have a report this evening? Councilor Zambrello.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick report about the school building committee. The last meeting was on October 9th. The next one is on Veterans Day, November 11th. So at this last meeting, the consultants came in, and as the first step of their planning and of informing the public and the committee of what the real cost of the school project is going to be, they looked at what the cost is of doing nothing. And some people might think that if you do nothing, it costs $0, and they wanted to help us put that into perspective. To get these schools to last another 10 years, what do we actually really have to do to them? And what's the financial implication of that? What's the construction implication of that? So we'd be looking at five years of construction to get them to last another five years beyond that, and it would cost the town nearly $60 million. And at the end of the day, they would be exactly the same schools, minus things that are required for code upgrades. So that's just to help start, put things into perspective. At the end of the day, you get exactly the same buildings, no upgrades at all, except for what's required by statute. Maybe they last another five years, there's no upgrades to learning space, there's no upgrades to the actual structure of the building, there's just nothing better about them for the kids, besides that they won't break for a few more years. And that costs us tens of millions of dollars to do nothing. So that's the first part of their presentation, and then next time, they'll be coming in with some of their initial recommendations for, okay, what are our other options? And they are hopeful that by February, they'll be presenting their final recommendations after the committee and other bodies have all had a chance to comment on this. So that's all going to go up on the website. It might be up already, I'm not sure, but that's all a work in progress. But just to start giving folks some perspective on what it takes to do absolutely nothing to win us a few more years of use in the same building, and we'd be back in this space in a few years. So, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zambrello. Further council reports. Seeing none, I have one. I attended the Veterans Committee meeting last week, and let me just point out one item, and that is the Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th at 11 o'clock. That will be at the high school. It's open to the public. I hope to see some of you there, and hope to see a lot of the public as we honor our veterans. Moving on to council comments. Does anybody have a comment or comments, councillors? Seeing none, I have a few. First, I wanted to recognize that early voting started today. We joined 46 other states in the United States with starting early voting today. We had over 500 people vote right here, actually in this room, which is a great start, and I urge everyone to vote, whether it's early or on Election Day. I also want to mention, we have wonderful Cove Carnival, great community event we had this past weekend. Terrific, I know a lot of people volunteered for that. Also wanted to mention, on Saturday night, I attended the Fireman Awards Dinner, supporting our firefighters in each of our three companies, and the men and women of the fire department do an amazing job. So that's a couple of things that happened, a couple of things that are coming up before our next council meeting. I already mentioned the Veterans Day Ceremony, but a couple others. On October 24th, we have a public meeting on the Plan of Conservation and Development. That's at Pittkin. If I'm getting this wrong, please let me know, Mr. Town Manager. I'm pretty sure I'm right on this. And that is on the future Plan of Conservation and Development for the next 10 years, and the vision for Weathersfield. And then October 29th is a feasibility study, public meeting on the future of the Pittkin Building. A lot of people have asked us, what are you going to do to improve that building? A lot of seniors have asked us, what are you going to do? Well, we're doing a feasibility study, and the first part of that is to get some public input on that. And lastly, I'll mention the Chamber of Commerce event that's happening, that's before our next council meeting, November 7th. It's their annual beer and barbecue event. That's all I have for council comments. Mr. Town Manager, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, I think you did a good job covering most of the events I would have talked about. But I do just want to mention, I mentioned the last meeting that, you know, we've done upgrades here to the video and sound system. We've improved all the equipment in the back room, and that's to make the experience in here, and particularly for those watching at home, better. I know there's been issues for some people that watch on the old YouTube platform. The sound and the video is still kind of rough. I would suggest to you all, and we actually posted a video on our Facebook and Instagram page, that kind of walks you through how to do this, but if you go to our website, you click on Agendas and Minutes, you go to the Government tab, Agendas and Minutes, it'll give you the meeting while it's running, and you can see, basically, access live meeting. And that brings you into the platform that it's actually created from, and the quality is much, much better. And if you need to wait till after the meeting's complete, you can go into that same platform, and it allows you to click on any agenda item and go right to that item in the video. You don't have to scroll through hours of meeting, you know, to get to what you want to see. So again, just go to our website, click on Government, Meetings and Agendas, and then you'll see the availability of those meeting minutes. So use that platform rather than the YouTube if you want the highest quality. But with that, I'll complete my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Town Clerk's report.
The EDIC monthly report is included in the packet, and also, as of today, Town Clerk's Office issued over 900 absentee ballots for the upcoming election, and the applications are still coming in. And also, as Ken stated, today was the first day of early voting, and I could just tell you, the response was very positive. As he said, there were over 550 people, but the hallway was constantly buzzing all day, and it all seemed to go very well, and that continues through November 3rd.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that. Moving on in our agenda, we have no bids. I now have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Moving right along, we are now off the consent agenda. We are on item J, is that J? Three.
No.
No, sorry. I'm on the wrong one.
Yep.
K1, sorry. Yeah, K1. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, I'm going to move to table K1 until the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Durek. Any discussion on the motion? Councillor Carbone.
Yes, this was tabled last time, and I was just curious why we're tabling it again. Were you unable to get the information? I'm just curious, because I have no idea why it keeps coming on the agenda and you guys keep tabling.
Yeah, so we're still reviewing it.
Okay.
And still want to get council input, and other inputs are pretty significant change, and in checking with the Town Manager, there's no absolute urgency to vote on this right away. So for the public's information, this is on the potential expansion of our tax incentive program to cover additional low income in other categories of folks who may qualify for tax incentive or tax benefit.
Are you working on the guidelines or the number? Are you trying to come up with a specific number? Is that what you're working on?
Yeah, so as you know, Councillor Carbone, we were given a proposal of, to look at different numbers, different possibilities, and still reviewing that, still looking for input from folks. Certainly, if you have input and the public has input, it's a fairly significant decision, and we've had a couple other decisions that were coming in in a few minutes that have taken a little more time, to be honest with you, in terms of some of the things we've been working on.
Okay, I just...
No, fair. It's a good question. Councillor Carbone?
I'm good, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, there's a motion on the table, to table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Moving right along, do I have a... I'm looking through, I think we're on L1. Sorry. I apologize, everybody. L1, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to authorize the Town Manager to proceed with soliciting proposals for the design and construction of a multi-use synthetic turf field at the proposed location at Millwoods Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Zambrello. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I have some discussion.
Councillor Carbone.
Actually, so there was nobody, there's nobody here to ask questions, so I, I had a few questions for Luke, so I'll just ask you, if that's okay?
Through to the Town Manager.
Kathy, I'm not sure if you have an update.
To the Town Manager and Kathy, if the Town Manager wants to call her up, Kathy.
I'm assuming you guys know, right? So, I know we had talked about, I mentioned it briefly in passing before the meeting, that the proposal looks a little different, right? So people are seeing the proposed synthetic turf, and now they're seeing a proposed natural turf to the south of that field. And we also know, obviously, this next phase, right, that's going to happen at some other point. So the field, and I'm just curious, the field that's there now, that will still be up and running? Will be able to utilize that field when all of this stuff is happening, right? The field that's south of the synthetic? No, I thought there was a multi-use there field already, no?
There's a baseball field there, and there's... Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, no, there currently are three softball fields that we've always referred to currently as Field 3, Field 4, and Field 5.
Okay.
Two on one side and one on the other. One is on the Griswold Street side, and two are on the other side. And then in the fall, we would put soccer fields up there.
Okay, so I'm confused. I thought there was a little field now, there's no soccer field there now or anything?
There's a soccer/football field there now.
In the synthetic or the grass turf area? I'm sorry, this is for me.
Sure. It's all grass up there now.
Well, the proposed area.
Oh, the proposed area shows the synthetic turf field and softball fields 3 and 4.
Okay.
So that would be...
It's so hard to see through this little thing. And so, thank you for that. So when we are going forward with this proposal to put forth some RFPs, the positioning that is mentioned on this, this is just conceptual, correct? This is, we're not saying this is exactly where we want the field when this goes out to RFP.
With respect to the RFP, we are saying that it would be where the proposed synthetic turf field will be, because, and that's the only element we're talking about here, is that one field. Because we cannot put out an RFP without giving the contractor a location, because they have to look, to price it out and to design it, they have to understand the topography of the area, they'll do soils testing, they'll do all kinds of things that go along with this, and to do that, they have to have a firm location.
A firm location. So I guess that brings, because these are my kind of questions for Luke, so I'm sorry you all fell into this, but my concern was that drive-through and the parking, so I had thought, well, if, you know, can we pull the park? I think one of the women, I think it was Cherry, had mentioned something similar. Can we pull the actual park a little more east? So maybe the parking could be, right, hold on, west, right? I want to pull it west towards the houses, and, you know, the parking could maybe be east of the field, so lower where the other parking is?
I think there's still an opportunity to do that. If you'd like to do that, you can say to, you know, shift the field to the west where the currently shows the parking area. You could say something to that effect, and we could work with, as part of the RFP, to say that we'd like them to shift that up, with the assumption that parking would be on the east side of the field at some point.
Okay. Because you make me nervous, and you're saying everything's firmed up. I'm like, okay, so that's great. So thank you for that information, I really appreciate that. As many of you know, I've always kind of been indifferent. Thank you, Kathy, I don't want to have you stand up there while I'm spouting some stuff. I've always been indifferent to fields, the synthetic fields, everybody kind of knows that. However, our sports community has really been asking for these for a very long time. Our parent leaders that are in the community, they have our children's best interests at heart, they have our community's best interests at heart. They're not asking us to do things that they, that would hurt our community, hurt our children. These are people that play on these fields, have played on these fields, are children... These are people that play on these fields, have played on these fields, their children play on these fields. And, um, again, as I'm indifferent to it, I just, it's hard because that's what the community's asking for, right? I've read the studies that say they're safe. I've read the studies that say they're not safe. Um, we actually have a synthetic turf in town and this has also been mentioned, um, through our community, um, comments. Uh, and fortunately for our community and all the surrounding communities that all have synthetic turf fields, everybody so far has been free from any kind of toxic injury that we know of. And, you know, one of the gentlemen mentioned, anybody knows of it, great, um, speak up. So, but having said all of that, so I am sensitive to the sports league parents, I know they don't want to hurt anybody and I'm s- sensitive to the people that, um, live in the area, um, but we also have to be fiscally responsible, right? We're up here, this is what we do. And for $1.6 million, we could put a grass turf field, a shed, some parking, a walking trail, but it doesn't belong at Millwoods. It belongs at Keisha. And a lot of people have come up here talking about Keisha and, and the Millwoods and, you know, six years ago, and I hate to keep beating this dead horse, y'all know how I feel about it, but we were encouraged to purchase this property and to literally, and, and Dan had said it best, because it, I actually have it in quotes, you know, for the last chance to purchase this property for athletic fields, open space and recreation. So we did and went to referendum. And the majority of people in town wanted athletic fields, surveys were done, studies were done. And, uh, the previous town council allotted funds to build this very requested and needed synthetic field on that property that was purchased for that purpose and it was met with heavy opposition, heavy opposition. We were told that we were going to create more injuries, we were going to cause cancer, toddlers were going to eat the crumb and that was going to become toxic and the water runoff from Keisha was going to somehow contaminate the wood, the water at Millwoods. Um, and then of course, you could never put a synthetic field next to a working farm, an active farm. So I don't think I need to state the obvious that the newly proposed placement of the synthetic field is directly adjacent to Millwoods Pond and, um, this grass turf farm, the, the Winding Brook Farm. Um, and, and everything these people had said is true, the majority on this council essentially won the election based on this very issue. This is a tough issue. Um, it's something that we dealt with and we got a lot, like I said, a lot of pushback. There was meetings held in this very room that told you how to vote in order to get the synthetic turf field eradicated from the town, to, to not move forward through that. And I hate using that, that word hypocrisy, but it just reeks of it and it feels horrible and for the community, it's confusing, it's frustrating and it's very uncomfortable. Um, I, and I really appreciate that the town manager came out publicly in favor of a synthetic field and I would have probably appreciated a lot more if that was done a year ago and maybe our kids would have been playing on a field right now. Um, the bottom line is that our town needs the, our leadership to be predictable, transparent, um, and responsible and for everyone in our community. But most importantly, it needs to get things done. So yes, we need athletic fields in town and I'm not opposed to a synthetic field, but I'm absolutely opposed and in disagreement of the placement. And so unfortunately, I can't support this and I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Counselor Carbone. Further council comment. Counselor Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I owe explanation to a lot of people. Um, I know a lot of people are mad at me at this point, a lot more people are going to be mad at me. Uh, some really good points were raised up tonight, so I, I kind of feel like I should address all those. Um, I share the same concern for the safety and the environmental impact that this synthetic turf field is going to have. I'm not going to go through everything because a lot of it has been said already. Uh, at the town council meeting two, two weeks ago, I asked the, uh, consultant to provide some of those studies that show that there is really no impact and I was told that he's going to send it over. I have never received anything by, by tonight. Um, as somebody who used to play soccer all the time when I was younger, which was a long time ago, um, I understand the need for more fields, um, totally support more fields, but not synthetic fields. Um, I do come from Europe originally and in Europe, pretty much nobody wants to play on them. Uh, European Union is banning sales of turf fields in the near future and I can go on and on. But there are a few things that I also want to mention. One is maintenance of fields. So we know that we have dozens of grass fields and we are not even talking about how we are going to address those, how we are going to improve those. So getting another field, synthetic turf field, it's not going to solve the issue that we have with other dozens of fields. Um, I also want to mention the cost. I can like many different things, but if I don't have the money to pay for it, who cares what I like? And we don't have the money for this turf field. We have the ARPA funds, but if there were no ARPA funds, we as a town don't have the money for it. And the way I'm looking at it is five, 10 years from today, I'm probably not going to be sitting here, but it doesn't matter, somebody's going to be sitting here, somebody's going to be paying for this. If we put another turf field at Millwoods and we already have one at the, uh, high school, that means that every five to six years, excuse me, we'll be due for field replacement. We don't have money to replace, uh, fields every five to six years and I don't see anything today that we are doing as council, as town employees, there's going to bring that much more money in that we have the money to replace those fields. Um, so the bottom line, yes, we need more fields. I, I want to address one point that says, you know, I was all about green, keeping Keisha green. Yes, I was about keeping Keisha green, not because of Keisha, but because I don't support synthetic field. And if I don't support a Keisha field and, uh, farm, I'm not going to support it anywhere in town. That's just why I said it and that's, that's what I don't support. And again, I, I like to think that I'm open-minded, although I think my wife would not agree with that, but I did ask for studies, I did ask for people to show me, um, why I should change my position and as of tonight, I have not received any of those proofs that I'm wrong with my beliefs at the moment. So for that reason, I can't support the turf field, the synthetic turf field, but I do respect everybody's decision to go one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dirk. Further council comment. Anyone? Counselor Clancy.
I just have a question and it can either be answered by Kathy Bagley or by the town manager. I, I just want to verify that we actually own the land that we're talking about after hearing from Mrs. Morgan. I assume that we're allowing, they're using their farming on town property, but I don't know.
So the, the field we are talking about right now for this motion is 100% completely on town property. Uh, the second field that's shown there to the south of that field, um, does cut over a small piece of their property. Um, but to your point that you just raised, um, I think, uh, Mrs. Morgan referenced like an acre or half an acre or something like that. Currently today, the turf farm, uh, is, includes about, we've estimated after surveying the land, about six acres of town property, which they should not be turfing and have been doing it for many years. So our proposal was that let's put the field where it should be best suited and then we're going to have to work out, um, negotiations with them because they shouldn't be using six acres of our land. Our proposal would be to straighten out the property line because they don't want, if you see their property, it goes to a point right now.
Yes.
Um, and that doesn't really work well for, for, um, for the turfing operation. They like that nice rectangular shape for their equipment, um, so that we would propose to straighten out a line so that provides them with a rectangle and gives, gives us, gives the town their full amount of land and gives, uh, the turf farm their full amount of land.
Can you explain on the, where on the map the land is that they're farming that belongs to the town?
So.
To the left of that second, of the?
Yes, so that area to the left, you see that dash black line?
Yeah.
That is the property line. So that, you can see the color of the turf below that, that's all town property.
And that's, that's currently being farmed?
Correct.
Okay.
And also there's a small sliver that's, um, to the, uh, west up top there. You can see the top of that image as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clancy? Are you good?
No, that was good. I said, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Further council comment. Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm excited for the ability to improve our recreational facilities. For decades now, the town has struggled to maintain, build, and have facilities that are commensurate with, I think, our expectations for play. And this, uh, new design for the master plan for Millwoods Park, the ongoing created design for the master plan of Keisha Farm with, as it's associated with the new educational upgrades and the educational committee that we're working with, um, really, I think could be a turning point for transformational change to the positive for our town. I'm excited for that. That being said, I want to thank, I think it was Phil and Terry, right, for, uh, having us walk around the property, understand the sightlines and the geography and that's very important. And it was a great conversation, regular people talking about regular stuff. And while we're only talking about the singular field today, um, there's a lot more ongoing conversation about whether or not the road is appropriate and should the parking be on that side? And, um, do we want to create more, um, a buffer zone or what do we want to buffer it with? And I think that that's all reasonable and should be on the table as we continue to discuss the best way for the park to interact with its neighborhood and vice versa. Um, that said, there's times when, um, I believe that this council in this town really does need to make transformational change. This area of recreation is certainly one of them. And one of the things I was concerned about necessarily with this plan is, you know, what will happen with those two baseball fields? Are we sort of passing one buck off for the other? And my understanding through talking with the Park and Rec Board, has been working with this for years now, is that there's, uh, some of the fill that is being used from these upgrades can be used to re-level off the two baseball fields to the north and that some of the funds that were, not with ARPA, but with, uh, uh, associated with the Connecticut, Connecticut distribution of funds for upgrade of the park can be used to then build those two new fields, uh, in short time, in a short timeframe. So I would imagine as we move along with, working with the community, working with the master planner, that some of those new improvements will be right on the heels of these improvements. And that excites me as a counselor and hopefully it excites us as a town. Uh, and I think that in a year or so, we'll be looking back and seeing what a beautiful transition and beautiful park that we do have. That said, I talked to, I've had conversations with Luke and people before this process even started, we talked about, uh, over 20 years, like when we see some of the trees that have been, I would say chopped down, but they've been felled by storms and disease and all the regular stuff that goes on. But part of this park plan would be to replant trees and big trees and to create that park atmosphere and increase the shade and the walkability of it. And I'm very excited for all of those things. Now, this is step one, it's on a particular field, uh, that we're talking about today, but I'm very excited for this park's transformation, both to become more park and to become, have greater use for the needs of today's society. So I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Further council comment. Counselor Rhodes.
Just a quick question, um, just for clarification, fields are still on the table at Keisha, correct?
Absolutely.
That's still, those are still a part of that bigger vision, so?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. I just wanted that because we need more than one. This is one field, we need two to four fields.
Yeah, we actually have a, um, you all approved funding for a master plan for Keisha that would include where fields might go.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to clarify that those are, because some of the conversation was sounding like fields were not happening at Keisha and I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rhodes. Further council comment. Counselors Ambrello and then Counselor Timbrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Kathy, could I ask you to come up one more time? I was just hoping that you could talk a little bit more about the, the work that the Parks and Rec Department has done on this and the advisory board. Um, I think it's a, it's a perspective we haven't heard as much about yet. Um, I know it's been a several year-long process and that there's been several votes to put the field in this particular location before any others. Um, so I was hoping you could just, um, tell us a little bit more about the work that was put into that and why you all believe that this is the best spot.
Sure. Um, working with the park board and with staff and, um, over, I would probably say, we've been talking about fields, I think, ever since I've been here, just because of, um, as I was quoted earlier, that we've put a lot of fields on places that are just grass and we've thrown the lines down. And, um, with the advent of lacrosse and field hockey, which has probably been, probably eight, now eight to 10 years here in town, that just took every piece of grass that we own that was flat, just to put fields down and handle the needs. And so we've been doing studies over the several years now as to what are our options, where can we go and what can we do? And it's, it's been a long process. It's been with the park board, with staff and with the maintenance staff, looking at, at what we've got and trying to keep what we have playable. So that's all been in the works. And as you've heard, there are drainage issues, we know that. There are, um, issues where the ground isn't level, we've heard that tonight. Park board has heard that many times. They've met with our sports, uh, sports representatives of youth sports and, uh, men's softball in town over several years now, getting their feedback, trying to figure out what was the best way to go. And you always, uh, we always talk about dreaming big and we knew that, uh, we needed more than one field because that wasn't going to do it, particularly with lacrosse and field hockey, based on what their needs are. Field hockey nowadays plays on a synthetic turf field. That's their preferred, um, field that they want to play on. Lacrosse has talked about that. And, um, football and soccer have always looked to that. We've learned from Cottone that we could put multiple uses on, on the synthetic field because it can take a lot of use and it, it does hold up well and it wears well. And we thought if we could get a field and get the funding for it, if we could do a synthetic turf field, that would help us meet some of the needs that we have today.
Okay, thank you for the, for the background on that and for the work that you've all done. Um, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you, Counselors Ambrello. Counselor Timbrow.
I take my cough drop out of my mouth. Um, okay, so a couple things. Um, so I'm a, just to set the stage, I'm a mom, I have three kids, all play sports, was an athlete, played sports, synthetic turf, didn't matter. I'm personally indifferent to it, but, uh, what kind of field anyways? What I think is the hard thing here is that at the end of the day, we need fields. And I think that, you know, I see people in here, Keisha's mentioned, you know, council members and it's like everyone's done with it, eyes are rolling because it's like we've heard it all before. But I think the problem and why it's becoming so complex, when it really should be simple, is that the two actually do go hand in hand. Because we had a decision about Keisha, we had a referendum and the majority of our residents approved and went for the fields. And then we had a minority group come in and essentially lobby for that to not be the case. And I understand that it was in their backyard and I have respect for that, but at the end of the day, the process was not followed. And because the process was not followed, we are now shifting and having a complex issue with the Millwoods people, which I don't think is fair either, because we wouldn't be here if we followed the plan to begin with. Um, I've had an issue with the Millwoods proposal from the beginning. I voted no on it from the beginning. I believe I voted no and on the record, I'm saying, based on principle, because of everything that we've talked about with the synthetic fields, I cannot vote yes for, for this. And I feel the same way tonight because we're still not following what the residents of this town voted on and something that we've been going back and forth with, obviously before me, I was not here in 2018, for multiple, multiple years. for multiple, multiple years. I think we need to look back at Keisha. We have an approved plan. To me, that makes the most sense. Instead of upsetting another group of people who are, have every right to be upset when something has already gone down and been voted on. Another thing I wanted to bring up is that this isn't just about fields. If you played sports, you know, because I've heard it cited multiple times, this 20% number, 20, it's only 20% of the population. I pulled up the demographics on Google and guess what? That's like one of the biggest percentages in town is 20% of the kids who use the fields. You have like 20 to 29 is 11%. Our seniors together is 25%. Like we're all in the same range. So we're not talking about a small group of people who are using fields and shouldn't have a say. Their kids, they don't come up and speak on the podium. Their parents do. And then obviously, you know, people who don't want more fields, they, they have the podium as well. But I'm saying that to set the stage that it's more than fields. It's, if, if you play sports, you know, it's family. It's a family sports game. The kids go to the fields, the community is involved, there's coaches, there's leadership, there's lessons. You're setting up these kids for success because they're learning things that honestly, in this society, we don't have a lot of anymore. There's not a lot of playing outside and dealing with controversy and having to deal with collaborating and teamwork and all of that. So, and I'm very passionate about this because I was an athlete and it, and it's, it's a big deal. And kids, they need it, families need it. It keeps kids out of trouble. I think fields need to be a priority. I think we're going about it the, the wrong way. I felt that way from the beginning. Quite simply, we would not be in this situation if we just followed the process that was already approved and voted on. And that's what I think that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Timbrow. Further, council comments. Counselor Carbone, I'm waiting my turn, not going to go. You're, you're, go again, please. Go ahead.
I'm just curious, so again, Luke's not here to answer this. The, we'll be able to, whatever you decide, do you have a backup plan in case you can't get under contract in time? Or how would that work, just in case you can't get under contract? I'm just curious if you have something else.
So I'm not, so if you say if.
So you guys go ahead and approve this tonight and it gets going. You think you'll be under contract by December 31st?
We do, yeah. We, it would, so because of the two weeks that have been lost by not approving at the last meeting, we're kind of in a position now where we have to go out for a design build as opposed to what we were previously proposing was we'll do the design, then we'll go out for construction RFP. But now we've lost two weeks. So in order to still meet the timeline, which we still believe we can do, it would have to be a design build contract, which essentially it'd be one RFP and you'd either have one, but more likely two contractors, one designer, one construction company that would form together and submit one proposal.
Okay. And then Deputy Mayor Forrest mentioned something to Kathy about the baseball fields I hadn't heard. You had said that you're going to be using some of the fill to spruce up the baseball field.
So this would be part of the RFP. The contract would tell us what they, how they would handle this. But as part of the, the RFP, we would state that the plan would be to ultimately build two more baseball, two new baseball fields at the locations provided. And then based upon that, they could structure the actual site work to help complement that. Things like drainage could be done concurrently and the fill could be used for the leveling. It likely would need more, but they could help get us there. And then there's also been money already allotted for the drainage of the baseball fields, the state bond money. So that money could be used in addition. So we feel that we could get pretty close probably to some of all of that project. But we'd have to wait and see what the proposals would say. Give us more clarity on that. But that would be the thinking around it. We'd save money because we're already doing site work out there. You don't want to do it twice. So we would just make it clear that the ultimate goal would be to create those fields as well.
But we'll still be down to baseball field?
For a period of time, yes. You would be, yeah.
And that's until we can come up with another place and come up with more money and.
Well, as, as the proposed master plan shows right now, those, those fields are relocated here. So if, if we went with those locations, then we could, that would be where they would go.
Aren't there baseball fields right there now, though?
T-ball fields in that part of the park right now.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And actually, the T-ball field on the green is pretty close to complete. It's looking really nice. They redid that whole thing, so.
And I know we have a motion on the table, but there was a recurrent theme. We kept hearing over and over and over again, and that's field maintenance. So maybe that's something we need to take a deeper look into, why that's not getting done maybe moving forward.
Well said, Counselor Carbone, thank you. Thank you very much. Further, council comments? Counselors Ambrello.
I just thought of one more question when Counselor Carbone was asking about the RFP itself. We brought up, last meeting, I believe I asked about this, and we've heard a lot of concerns about materials. And it's my understanding that we have to put the materials into the RFP that we would like the proposals to factor in. Is that accurate? And how do we, how do we go about that as a, as a town? What's the process like for deciding what those materials will be, what will be requested?
So under the previous proposal, last week, we were presenting it the last meeting, it would be that we would do the design first and then do the construction piece.
I see.
And for that, we would need to know the materials specifically to do the design so that we could get the RFP together. I mean, I think there might be an opportunity now if, that we're going design build to make it clear in the RFP that, you know, environmental concerns are a major factor in our, in our decision here. And we would like the bidders on this to propose the least impactful environmental materials, you know? So we could word it in such a way that I think we could leave the door open for them to provide a less, you know, whatever they feel, based upon the industry standards right now, is, is the least impactful from an environmental perspective.
Okay, yeah, I would definitely like to see that. And thank you for clarifying too. So now that we're combining this into design and build, it works a little bit differently than it would have last time where we would be specifying that more exactly.
Correct, but I will also say that generally speaking, and this will, this remains to be seen, but generally speaking, when you go design build, it, it does tend to raise the price. How much that would be, we don't know until we get it out there. But if we're going to even consider it, it's got to get out on the street very quickly for us to make the deadline.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Ambrello. Further council comments, questions?
So I have a few, but let me start with the most important. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight to speak their mind. Everybody, and there's been so, so many who have reached out to us in the last few weeks, in the last few months, and in the last several years about this issue. And I want to thank everybody for their feedback. And I want to thank the council who spent a lot of time and hours on this. And I want to thank the Parks and Rec Board and Kathy. This is a complex issue. It's a difficult issue. Let me tell you where, where I come down on this issue. And it's not easy for anybody out there and here. The Parks and Rec Board has studied this for years and they took two votes. And both of those votes were unanimous. Republicans and Democrats and independents who serve on that board. And both of those votes were to put the next field in Weathersfield at Millwoods and that it be a synthetic turf field. That is the vote that they had. It is also the strong recommendation of our professional staff, town staff, to have a synthetic turf field. As was just said, and I'm going to emphasize this, when we put, if, if it passes tonight, when we put that out for bid, we want to ask that we get as environmentally, I don't know if, I'll use the word safety, that may be used in other towns, the latest, as many towns continue to build these fields. The most environmentally safe quality that we, that we can get and we can put that in the RFP. I also want to say, about two years ago, the council asked the town manager to do a study on our field needs in Weathersfield. And that study came back that we need two to four fields as soon as possible, that we do not have enough playing fields for our kids. And that was a couple of years ago. And then there was debated, where should it go, what type of field? I'm not going to relitigate all that history other than to emphasize again that the Parks and Rec Board, who did a lot of work on this and who voted unanimously, all parties, that we should put the field at Millwoods in a synthetic field. So I also want to say I have some concerns and want to see more information on the proposed parking and the proposed road. I'm not sure, I'm certainly not convinced that those need to be where it was, where they are. And we still have time, as most of you know, to, to, to look at that. But we are under a very, very tight time window. So if we are going to put another field now with the ARPA funds, then we have to act tonight. So I will be supporting the promotion for those reasons. And again, thank you to everyone who came out and countless people have reached out to me and the rest of the council with their feedback. So if there are no other council comments, and I'm just looking, I will call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Nay. And do I have any abstentions?
I nay.
You're a nay, okay. Sue, do you have the vote?
Can I just take a roll call vote, please?
You may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Mayor Lesser?
Is a yea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Carbone?
Nay.
Counselor Clancy?
Aye.
Counselor Durick?
Nay.
Counselor Rhodes?
Aye.
Counselor Timbrow?
Aye.
Counselors Ambrello?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes five to three, thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we have our next item, which is L2. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the amended Town of Weathersfield flag-flying policy dated August 19th, 2024, as attached.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Rhodes. Do I have a discussion? Counselors Ambrello.
All right, I definitely have to say something on this. I think I've been pretty clear that this, this has been a pretty personal issue for me. It impacted my community directly and they've had very strong feelings throughout this entire process when we changed the policy. And now they have made themselves, they've made themselves heard. We, we saw some benefit from this policy. We had two ceremonies, one for the pride flag and one for the Bosnian genocide remembrance, both of which were very well attended and really showed that people do want to be recognized in their town. They do want to be seen. And especially when you've been part of a community that's been persecuted, it means a lot when the place you live says, "We want you here." And so this isn't something that I wanted to change back, but circumstances have changed. And we can now see that this, this is just way too much to continue to deal with. And we can't keep continuing to have ideological discussions on flags. It's just, it's not a good use of anyone's time and it's ultimately not helping people more than I think it's hurting them. So I've gotten comfortable, comfortable with this. And it's not an end. We still have exactly the same goals that we did when we passed this policy, to celebrate diversity of this town, which is something that's, it's been written into our strategic plan, something that every counselor agreed to last year. And we can still do that. We've seen that this might not be the best way to continue doing that. So we're going to change course and we can achieve this goal in a different way. So just as one example to start, because the LGBTQ community has been most affected by this arguably, changing this policy back after getting the flag back for just a year, after it had been flown with no issues before the, the previous policy, it's been, it's been tough. So we've reached out and had lots of conversations and meetings and one-on-ones and group conversations and said, okay, what can we do that will achieve the same goal without a flag? And so there will be pride activities next year in June. We don't know what that will look like yet. The committee has just started meeting. There's a group of citizens and town staff who just formed and the citizens are so passionate and full of ideas. And so that's just getting started, but we hope that that will lead to something fun and open to everyone. And you can come or you cannot. Ultimately, it's up to you, but everyone is welcome and we'll definitely share more details on that as the committee comes up with them. Again, there's nothing that's been decided yet. But I wanted to share that as an example of just one way we're changing course here. So we don't have to give up on the ultimate intent, but we do have to be responsive to just how clear it is that this way is not working anymore. So not my favorite thing to vote on, but I'm going to. And I hope that we can have a better way forward going forward. And it doesn't have to stop here. If there are other ideas that folks have for ways that we can recognize different communities within our larger community, please, you know, you can, you can reach out to us or you can do it, you can just do it yourself. You don't need our permission to do these things. So I hope that this will be a more inclusive way forward and that we can keep going on this path just in a, in a more productive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Ambrello. Further, council comment? Counselor Timbrow?
I just wanted to confirm for myself that, I'm so sorry.
Take your time.
I'm so sorry.
Kind of take your time.
That, um, this is, I've been literally drinking nonstop.
Take your time.
That this, it's going back to the policy that it was prior to the change. There's nothing additional or it just is going back.
That's correct. We actually made a, one other slight amendment because there was a, there was a typo in the, in the previous one that we corrected. But yeah, it's the same policy.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I think it's the right way to go and I'm glad that we are here.
Thank you, Counselor Timbrow. Have some water. Any other council comment, please? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on in the agenda. We have no new business or ordinances. We have next our second public comment section. Again, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please. And please address your comments to the town council and ask that you all be respectful. So Robin, I saw your hand first, Robin?
Thank you. I swear I've been sick for like three weeks. I'm definitely just remnants of this one.
Sure. Robin Barasa, 248 Dale Road. First of all, I just want to say thank you for reconsidering the flag policy. Personally, I do think it's the right thing. I think there was a lot of time wasted, a lot of energy. And I also think it was a little bit of a black spot on Weathersfield for several weeks, few months. So thank you for reconsiderating, greatly appreciated. I'm also wanting to speak up. I probably should have saved time the first comment round, but I'm not really pleased with the Millwoods vote at all. This is a, this, I wasn't in favor of purchasing Keisha Farms. I'm also not in favor of turf farms. I'm a big proponent of more fields. I agree with Counselor Timbrow about organized sports, especially in this day and age. My kids were cheerleaders, dancers and swimmers. We didn't have a lot of opportunity to use turf fields. But I, I, I feel this definitely has kind of a scent of not in my backyard. I did not vote for the purchase of Keisha Farms, but it was a democratic process, a referendum that got voted on the basis that fields were going to be built there. And somehow or another, even though this Millwoods plan has been simmering around for years, now it's become fast-forward, full steam ahead on Millwoods. I grew up at Millwoods Park. I worked at Millwoods as a rec leader and a lifeguard in that swimming pool. My daughter worked there as a lifeguard. And we really need to reconsider putting an artificial turf farm near a place where kids are swimming, first of all. Second of all, this is down the road, an actual parking lot behind people's homes. I, you know, feel free to sell your homes and go live on Griswold Road when you think about building a road going down into those fields. Honestly, that, I, I hope you got, none of you here are going to be approving that. That is just not fair. It's not okay to these Griswold families and anybody else that's sort of backing up there. Go ahead and build your fields, but, and, but don't put a parking lot there. I mean, I think it was Joni Mitchell paved paradise, put up a parking lot. It's not okay. So really reconsider this, that you went full steam ahead to save 1.3 or 4 million ARPA dollars that should have been used elsewhere. You know what? Well, the, that small minority had the loudest voice at Keisha. I'd like to see how fast you're going to start moving ahead, building those fields there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Further public comment? Yes, yep, Marian, and then Christine, you're up next.
Marian Zabedo, 34 Dorland Circle. My opinion is the Parks and Rec voting on fields is like putting the wolf in the hen house. What a travesty. You want and need more fields. I understand that, but Weathersfield has no more room. And to take the only community park for all residents and make it a sports complex, which has been the design all along, is really discriminatory against all these children who don't need an athletic field. Where are they supposed to go? Where are all the elderly supposed to go? Where are all the walkers supposed to go? This is the only place in town. I've been to every park in town and there's, the park is a misnomer for most, for most everything we call a park here. There are little paths in the woods that you can't go unless you're carrying a weapon. And there's a little. and there's a little half acre that you can sit on a towel on. This is the only community park, and you are taking it for the special interest sports groups, which is the only people this town cares about. Millwoods Park is the only place you offer families, and to take that away is a violation of civil rights of all the people in this town who don't require an athletic field. The ARPA funds could be used for something else. It's not too late, but the choice is they must be used for these fields, and that's not the case. They can be changed to be used for something else where they're really needed, even if you want to upgrade and maintain the fields that you already have, because they're not maintained. I go to Millwoods Park. I go every day. I walk every day, winter and summer, and there are rarely all the fields being used, two or three maybe. And you say because they're not good. Well, they're not maintained. There's no drainage. There's no catch basins. There's nothing. It hasn't been done. So, you're going to let these things, these fields are unmaintained, and now you're going to build a new sports complex, which requires meticulous maintenance, daily maintenance, chemicals applied after every game, combing the field a certain way, depending on what sport you're playing on the field. And you're going to, that's going to cause litigation and more costs for Weathersfield residents. This is already a multi-multi-million dollar project. It's not a 1.6 million dollar project. It's going to be a huge tax burden for Weathersfield residents, and the litigation is going to be another huge tax burden. It's a legal environment that's just happening all over, and if you do the, and there's no research. I'm sorry to be upset, but there's been no research. I can't believe you don't research these things. It's insane, and it's a real disservice to the Weathersfield community. And 95% of these residents who don't want these fields deserve to be heard and deserve to be acknowledged and not just lip service.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Further, Christine?
Christine Kelly LaSella, 37 Belmont Street. I appreciate the vote that you guys did to return the flag policy to what it was. I just think, and I've told you 100 times, it's just a lot of dissension. I don't hate to see two communities go at it. I think a flag was a talk, and I think in a community, walk the walk and have events and do things at the community center with the social justice coalition, but I think your decision was great in that, and I'm glad that it finally is being put to rest because it did go on a little long. To hear you vote the way you did on the Millwoods plan is a little upsetting. The guy or girl who drew up that plan, I'm going to go out on a limb and say they're not from town. They're not really, they're an engineer, an architect, and that's what they get paid to do, and they also get paid to sell you a field, just like when you go buy a house or a car. That individual wants to sell you what they have. I don't know anything about turf fields. I think I've said it before, I don't really have an opinion, but the opinion stands, and I would love for one of you at some point to express what happened to the 2018 referendum? Why is there not a field on Keisha Farm? Why? Where'd it go? You could have already put one there. And it's upsetting because the master plan for Millwoods has been around since 2002, and not a lot of you have been here since then. And then, this is all due respect, Mr. Town Manager, but you've come here for a few years now, and you're getting your feet wet and everything, but our town is historic and traditional. Millwoods is tradition. I took swimming lessons there a long time ago. Guys and girls play softball. But to take this, well, we have this chunk of money. We have to hurry up and spend it, and Mr. Forrest to stand here and say, "I'm excited." It's not about you. It's about 27,000 people in this town, and God, if you're going to do this and put Millwoods out for a referendum and then explain why you don't act on the Keisha Farm one, who got to you all to say, "We're not going to do anything at Keisha Farm"? Because that should have been done. That should have been done a year after the property was bought. So, my frustration is somebody, please speak up and say why there's no field there. I know Ms. Roats said that she asked the question, yes, there will be fields going there, but we bought the farm to put them there, so let's do that. We already had Millwoods. There's fields there for kids to play on and adult softball. Do Keisha. That's what the referendum said. It is embarrassing for our town to have a referendum, to bring people out to vote, and then you all don't go with what they said. It doesn't matter that you weren't here. That is what people voted on. So, yeah, and I just think that it's fair to have people in town. I'm not dissing the rec board, but that's made up of people who are appointed, and I don't know what their expertise is on where to put a field, other than they're the park and rec board. So, yeah, that's it. And one last thing, Mr. Town Manager. I called your office a couple of weeks ago regarding parking in front of Masonic Hall on Main Street. The group that's working there, they park on the lawn, three, four cars, not work trucks. I called the police department twice. I don't know if they went. Cheryl told me that you were going to look into it and that it was Charles Morrison's lane to take care of it. Charles Morrison told me it wasn't and that I had to call the police, so I did, but there's still parking there, so I don't know if someone can get back to me if I'm just barking up the wrong tree and they're allowed to do that, but it is our neighborhood, and it looks yucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Further public comment? Yes, ma'am. Steve, I have you. Mr. Young as well.
Nancy Korea, 95 Griswold Road. Ms. Clancy, I would appreciate it if you look at me.
I am looking at you.
You, over there. Jane, Jane, please, don't look down. Look at me, please.
I am looking. I've been looking at you.
Not you.
Yeah, I mean, Nancy, Nancy, please address the council as a whole, please.
Well, she's, she's, never mind. I'm a human being. I live in this town. I have lived in this town for 35 years. This is not fair. You say that children are not a minority here. There's 5,307 children here and 27,000 adults. This is a special interest group that wants these fields. Nobody here cares about what's happening in the environment. What do you think is going to happen to these children that play on these toxic fields? What? I don't understand. You say you want these children to have this opportunity, and then you're going to put them in a toxic sludge, and what is going to happen to us, to the elderly, to everybody? Because what you're doing is introducing a miasma of toxic sludge throughout, everywhere, throughout this town. This is not fair. Other citizens live here, not only children, and not only children can get what they need from fields and sports, or there's many other ways to spend this money. It is not fair. It is not fair what you're doing.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Young, you're next, and Steve, I have your, you want to speak to? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, coming in here tonight, we have a whole bunch of parking spots that are indicated for voting. Those signs and ropes should have been taken down. I didn't park in one of those spots in fear of our local police pulling my car away. Got it? There shouldn't be. If you're going to put ropes up and say it's for parking, take them down at night, so it doesn't, so when there's meetings, people can park all over. You know, this early voting has cost us a lot. It cost us a lot in our budget for the registrar of voters to increase a lot of money on what, on the budget. Now, you have parking spots specifically for those voters, and you only got 500, 550. But the thing is, at the end of the day, you should take the ropes down. As far as Millwoods Park goes in your vote, terrible. Special interests prevail again in Weathersfield as always. The rest of the citizens can go fly a kite because that's just how it is. You know, you talk about the parking. You talk about where you're going to put this soccer field. Think about this. You're either, it's a hill going up. They're going to cut into the hill and pull the dirt back, and the soccer field will end up on a nice, level field, and then you're going to have to put up some kind of stonework, so the parking will be up and above. That's what's going to happen, and then a couple of years later, we'll end, those people who live there will see lights come in, just like they did at Coton Field. And when that field is down 10, 15 feet, those lights will come down closer to their homes, and that's terrible. Those shining lights will be shining right in their houses, and it's all your fault. Terrible. There's no planning that goes on here. This is nothing but a group of people to take care of their special interests, and that's what it's all about. You know, at the last town council meeting, I was up here talking about, I took a tour of the five different elementary schools, and I got cut off with the five-minute rule at that point, and I'm going to pick up from there. And what I ended up talking about, and I want to continue, is that there's a radiator, a radiator that gives off heat that they made a big issue out of, that we got to tear this building, we got to renovate this entire building because of this radiator. Why the hell don't they fix that radiator? Oh, it's obsolete. They don't make it anymore. Well, baloney. You take out the part that's bad, which is a universal part, it's probably a half-inch water pipe, fix it and hook it up to one of those units that regulate the heat. Fix it. I don't know why the town is the most poorest of Stewarts of their property, and it starts all right here. Just replace the power head, and that's all you need to do. And so, I did a little investigating, and it appears that in June 20th, 2005, at the town council meeting, they recommended a roof replacement at the High Crest School. And that was in 2005. As we got into 2017, 12 years later, there's mention of roof leaks at that school. Here you had a commercial roofing put on the entire building, and what was the entire building is 75,000 square feet, few extra feet after. I'm not going to talk about it. But the fact is, 75,000 square feet is totally renovated, replaced at the cost of $492,000. Think about that. $492,600 bucks, whatever it was, the whole roof. At the September 3rd town council meeting, you folks voted to spend $158,000...
Mr. Young, your time is up. Please summarize your comments.
You voted to spend $158,000 to do 6,800 feet, and we all know the name Costco from the state of Connecticut, who was in charge of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Yeah, thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Further public comment? Steve, do you still, yep, Steve?
Steve Kelly, 29 Old Smithy Lane. Just a couple of random thoughts that I had. The problem I see with you taking over Millwoods with the vote you took, when you look at all the other open space we have in town, Millwoods, I grew up in all Weathersfield. We used to walk, bike up there, second half of Little League. We played down the green the first half. We were the American Division. Second half, we'd get to go up and play at the big field. But Millwoods was always the center of town. Everybody used it as like a focal point, and now we're sort of destroying that because it was the best open space area. When you look at the other open space areas that we've gotten, that we went and bought, the Willow Street property there, and we bought it, and to be honest with you, I go up and down Willow Street a lot. I never see anybody out there utilizing it, you know, walking around, because it's just not, it's not as inviting as Millwoods. Keisha Farms, I remember the mayor at the time, Bellow, in an article saying that the reason they wanted to buy that was because we didn't want houses there, because houses are going to have a couple of kids, they're not going to pay enough in property tax, and it's going to end up costing us money. And I used to laugh at that, and I said, "It's not worth going to argue." I said, "Meanwhile, we have this Economic Development Committee, Commission that's trying to get business to come in, and what does business want? They want people." So, the more population we have in Weathersfield, but yet, I said, "That thing will never pass." But then, I guess whoever made the deal, they got the athletic people involved, and they said, "Hey, look, you know, we'll put fields over here at Keisha for you." And I said, "That's not a bad idea. It's out of the way. You know, there's plenty of land there. You have parking and everything." So, now, you know, I heard the excuse that, well, the Park and Advisory Board, unanimous vote. But you know what? Nobody elected the Park and Advisory Board. They headed the different town committees. They appoint people to it, and I get it. It's hard finding people that want to do that. So, they gave you their opinion. The end result still lays with you people. I don't care what they say. It's still you listening to everybody else, you know, whether they're at a meeting or they're out in the town or they're calling you, whatever. You've got to make those decisions. We have a bunch of administrators, with all due respect, not all of them live in Weathersfield, so whatever they recommend and do, you know, they're not going to be here when it comes down the road, like Councilman Durick said. Okay, so we have the money right now to put this field in. 10 years from now, we have to fix the field. Now, we got to come up with that money again. You know? I get it. That's going to be a problem. I really think Millwoods needs to be left. You can reconsider it. When I was on the council, I got a guy to reconsider on the prevailing side. Think about it tonight. Think about it. Is this really the right way to go? It looks like what's happening is everybody let it go to the last minute. We didn't have Plan B or Plan C, and now we have to do something or we're going to lose this money. Well, come up with another plan. There's plenty of things that need to be fixed. You know, the original Millwoods plan, not much ever got done with that. You look at the bocce courts, that was done privately. The Little League field was ramrodded by Little League. Our softball league, when I was one of the guys running it, we put irrigation in. We forked up the money for it. Don't even get used, because I was told, "Oh, well, the town crew doesn't have time." I said, "If you put a timer on, see, it goes on, goes off. They don't have to stand there and watch it." I'm just encouraging you, give it a second thought. You're taking a great property and just, you know, not destroying it, but like the lady who says she loves walking through there, anytime I'm up there, you do see a lot of people that just, it's real casual. It's not like Willow Street. It's not going to be like Keisha Farms either. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Further public comment? Tom?
Tom Mazarello, 600 Walker Hill Road. Going to talk faster this time.
Going to talk faster this time. I didn't get to present what I wanted to say. I completely disagree with the plan to proceed, and I think what's going to happen here is, you know, we had this... The town manager was instructed to do an assessment of the fields and come up with a solid result of what is actually required. And I remember he did that. He was early on his career here in Weathersfield, and I thought he did a fantastic job on the report. I commented to him that he did that. I got a preview of it, and he ended the report with saying that there's only two places in town where fields could be put, Millwoods and Keisha Farm. And my comment to him was, "Well, you weren't really asked to provide that piece of information. You were asked to do a needs assessment." Nevertheless, I guess he didn't agree with my comments, so the report went out with those two areas identified as potential places for fields. And that's when the dispute really started, because now the anti-field Keisha group sees that opportunity and said, "Oh, we can put a synthetic field at Millwoods, and we'll do it that way." Nevertheless, that's where we're at. I am going to use all my skills and expertise to force a referendum on this. I'll give you a little background. I have property, a commercial property in Bloomfield, and some out-of-state developers were going to put a mega warehouse up there in Bloomfield, on my street, across the street from me. And I had a group of people, and we went the court direction to stop it, and there was four parties involved. And the developers got to three of the parties and convinced them to withdraw their claim. Well, not Tom. He didn't back down. And it was a $91 million project. I just got my final notification that I lost, and I started 18 months ago. It took 14 months for it to go to court, and then I appealed that to the appellate court, and that took another four months. So 18 months, one guy stopped a $91 million project. Millwoods isn't even a challenge for me, okay? I need 1,000 signatures in 12 days. I'm going to get those 1,000 signatures, and your project's going to stall, and I hope you come up with Plan B, because I don't think this is going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Further public comment? Jim?
Five minutes.
Name the address for the record again, please, Jim.
Jim Pettit, 88 Griswold Road. Five minutes. Yes, I'm disappointed with the vote. Yes, I live on Griswold Road. Yes, the property backs up to me, is adjacent to my house and property and backyard, and that's not why I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to it because you didn't provide the leadership that I thought you would. Yes, you came by on Saturday morning and talked to us. That's great, but there's so many pieces of this plan that are still in a state of flux, the parking, the road through the property. Where exactly the artificial turf is going to go? Maybe you know, maybe you don't. But there's so many more needs that this town needs, and this is the most important? Maybe to some. So what's the... If there's a master plan for Millwoods, what's the master plan for the town? What's the master plan for the... What's the master plan for the town? Why isn't that affected? What part of the town is disaffected? That's disgusting that you're doing this, and this is the most important thing? There's schools that are... Roofs are leaking. There's heat. Rooms that the children have no heat. They have to wear coats. Yes, I'm upset, and I apologize for slamming my fist, but I can't believe your leadership is taking us down this road. I cannot believe it. It's sad. It's sad. And each one of you has to live with that. That's going to be your legacy. Maybe Tom will succeed, maybe he won't. I don't know. I'm going to vote in favor of it, of what Tom's doing, signing the signature, not because it's my backyard, because it's a poor plan. It was a poor plan when the developer... When the engineer did it, and you still don't have final plans on it. You still don't have final costs on it, and you're adding to our taxes for it? That's not leadership. That's expediency. And you're saying that it's because you got a unanimous vote from the Board of Rec. What have they done for Parks? Their name is Parks and Rec. What have they done for Parks? Pretty sad, ladies and gentlemen. Pretty sad. Leadership is on you, and I don't see it. I don't see it. Some of you maybe. Some of you, it broke your heart to vote no, because you like to be unanimous, and that's fine. You want to be unanimous on your votes, but sometimes it's not the right thing to do, and I give you credit for voting no. Live with that.
Thank you, Jim. Further public comment? Seeing none, we have no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No motion.
Councilor Zan Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Be is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.